Good morning. Tovella. Linela Gakemosa Chabane, the chairperson of the portfolio committee of OMAFES. We request all of us to rise for the national anthem. Aleboh. Thank you very much and welcome members of parliament who are here, the clergy, traditional leadership, stakeholders, and all political parties and members of the community.
Kaya leboha, kedu medishadi. Tote chabaneza parliamente zee ten kuano, lese chava kakakare, so le marena ten kuano.
We are here to interact with yourselves in relation to the proposed amendment bill on marriages.
Retlekuano or retlo tsetse tamo halelona mabapi, lese sumatiso samula ote injuali o amanale tama nyalo.
So this is your meeting. We request that you conduct yourself with discipline and respect each other when you're going to contribute on this process.
Ena kekopa nyalu na meri ala kopa horre, litleli tshara handle, musebezi ngona otlai tu.
We have a standard agenda. In fact, we're here since yesterday, here in Free State for the next three days. You started in Bloemfontein. Today we're here and tomorrow we're proceeding to other areas to conduct this public hearing. We've already interacted with six provinces.
Re kuano province, in ya Free State, refislima obana rekadile kuana mangao, juali retla ba kuano kajin, osan retla fetela Bethlehem, juali shente, retzali du province, shente diinze tseleti, ntsarit zala pele kamsabezi ona.
We have a standard agenda. We've already observed the national anthem. We'll have introduction by Honorable Machi. We'll have, we don't have, I'm advised that there's no member of council, of the municipality or members of parliament. Court, or the presentation. We'll then invite Honorable Mochale to outline how we're going to interact with us. And then we'll then invite Honorable Ngobeni to way forward and summary for closing remarks on this. So that is standard agenda for the public hearings.
Renalili nani la tama iso, lese lebule tsumo, le batu batla tsa batlo itza tsetibi iso. Re blenelitza apel horre, haumele khotla ten watikuloe na yateng kuano otlatlar amahela. Ibele haule se tosa, le khotlala kesamla ola province, silechile otlar amahela. Mbahaba olte mre na yateng kuano, akana tsa ya nahe otlatlar amahela.
I'll now invite Honorable Machi.
Ketsabicha mme.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson. Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson. I would like to greet you this morning in the name of our mighty Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Kaya lewa modulas tulo, kialdu medishaka oufela, kalibizola mre na yaha bane Jesus Christ.
Thank you, mine is the easiest one, just to let you know who are here today.
Yakatabaki bebe oloke olublen lafele orna, retlo itza mkuano kajin.
We are with our honorable Chairperson, Honorable Musa Chabane, Honorable Miriam Mohammed, Honorable Palaminu Chama, Honorable Lerato Ngobeni. No, I'll start by saying him now. Honorable Matopa Lerato, Honorable Nicole Pollman, Honorable Andreen Ruos, Honorable Tapel Mochale and Honorable Sihle Ngobane. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you and Honorable Machi. We also have the provincial manager of OMAFES.
Rena Lemo Kamedi Walafa pa la zalahi la province.
And all other officials of parliament and the department of OMAFES. Can I now invite our colleagues to be introduced?
Le basankabo se ba parliamente inhamo le balifa pa la zalahi.
Yoku palidi, our colleagues, just to indicate the languages here. Yeah, I'm Archie Hrune for Afrikaans.
Morning, I'm Kaman Ardo, interpreter for Afrikaans in English.
Good morning, I'm Chad Yarasmus for Sign Language with my colleague Gavin behind me.
Good morning, I'm Lishon Olupetla Kisesut.
Hotson ki mawatu mulukuane, sizoana interpreter. Molueini tinguvyokaze, moletsane language practitioner is closer in English.
Naga ndatemtlu. Ndemtlu, aleboh.
Thank you very much, we're now going to... Is there any other person or traditional leader who want to welcome us? Because I know there's no councillor or...
Na honale mutu ateng kapa marena yateng kuano yakatlang alor amahela.
Or any person who recites here, so that we ask.
Kapa mi kutuapi lofela ye bang akavaltasalaya alor amahela tikulohonyena.
Good morning. I'd like to greet you all in the name of our Jesus Christ, amen. Although I know that I'm not one of those who have to welcome you, but I have to. I am Archbishop Toppo. I am saying you are more than welcome, more especially to you, the leaders from our parliament. Ditando guti namgele kine kuse kaya apa, feel at home, don't stress yourself. What I can say to my colleagues here, baruti lelona batwahaisu, just feel free. We have this department. They don't have to run away. We have to ask questions, we have to do input. But I'm just welcoming them. They are not listening to what I'm saying. I'm just gossiping so that they cannot ask. Hakibatle baru tu anfunba si venteta nan, masingabi nochu uchu, koba kutuapa vele parliament. Let's grill them. These people, they are here. This is our marriage, this is our kids. Harbor grinding, thank you very much. Portfolio, you are more than welcome to le juale putu here in Machabing. Yeah, as I have said, thank you very much.
No, thanks very much. Lerona, today we retleli Bishop Oarona Matapo. So the whole day you are going to be interacting with our own bishop. Yes, in passing. So we'll move straight to the item. We'll brief, have a short brief on the marriage bill.
Retla ba le tsetibo e khotla nyane mabapi, le mula oona o amanale tama nyalo.
So as we've indicated that this is your meeting and I'm happy that the pastor you have provoked the intention that all of you must be free to raise issues around this important subject matter.
Re aleboha olo, le tseba horre kopa no ena ke alo na, ibilele ndatemu Bishopo osanza alkolo diite horre, le skela tshaba otsangisama ikutlo alo.
The parliamentary education team conducted workshop throughout the three areas we have visited in relation to this subject matter of the marriage.
Le fa'pa le amanaleza tuto parliamente, nleseli le laya di triken, setaru sena ceban retlo sebeza otsona kuano Free State hufana, ka tsetibo le tuto ebatlangi tibitibile mabapi le mula oona, er klo otsola kajin.
The Constitutional Court ruled that there are certain sections that are inconsistent with the Constitution and parliament and the president must correct that anumad.
Le khotla lamula ote o, nsele tshalu si se horre, mula o ngona ose ngolten horre na, honali dikaroluana ce ten hoona ce bang hadisama isanele mula ote o. Yaba le khotla le laye la horre, mula oona ubu seze parliamente, nglo mu presidenta horre, ubia le uluki sobo ocha osumatiso, wetsa za horre, otslo tama isanele mula ote o.
And the court cited the marriage of the Muslim that are not included in the marriage act.
Yaba le khotla leo le tasi seza tabaya le nyalo lama Moslemu, le bang lo na halia huke la mula o ngoting o amanale tama nyalo.
The Department of OMAFES then facilitated a white paper to consolidate all existing marriages into one statute.
Yaba le fa'pa le ditabatsale hae lese le kopa anya, mula o otlaki nyeli tama nyalo ana kaoufela horre, abete inka hara mula o.
They then developed a bill submitted to parliament and referred to these members of the portfolio committee to subject it to members of the public.
Yaba barala bili kapaseka mula o, yaba vasitisa committing ena yatsebezo eteng kuano horre, etlo isola horre, ibele lukisobo uchu.
So parliament or the portfolio committee, we don't have a decision on this amendment bill.
Really, parliamente kapa committee ena yatsebezo.
We don't have a decision on this amendment bill.
Really, parliamente kapa committee ena yatsebezo, na onama tsa, ahorre rekare reysebeza kahose ose, biliyena, etla me horre, etla holona se chava, ibele ona vatsangisama ikutlo orna, le batla ibeka mohaujua.
As we've indicated that we've went through other provinces to consult on this subject matter and we're here to present ourselves with these documents so that we interact with members of the public.
Yalo kasha tshalu si se horre, tserile du province, shente diinze kabanselela horre, relo buales chava, wetsa za raschava, ibesona se saisama ikutlo sarata isor na, rekena matatingo fe.
The details of how we're going to move forward will be outlined later by Honorable Ngobeni.
Diinca se tibile ntsa orna retzala pele juang, di se tshala losa hamrau ke mshompe ngobe.
So this bill outline the, or it provides for the designation of marriage officers.
Biliyena esai isaka hobewaha basanka ba ikarabella ngota ngodiso yata tama nyalo.
It also provide for the requirement of polygamous marriages.
Ibezi yasa isha horre na, dikokea okidi finza, ze amanang lele nyalo last tip.
It also provide for the age that must be considered. It also provide for the age that must be considered for spouses to be involved in marriages.
Ibele yasaki shahora na, kesefiskepe le sadile motseban dia sewa bakinza ba tubanya lana.
It also provide for the dissolution of marriages.
Ibele yasalosa apa, le kamohawaho khalwa amanyalo.
It also outline on how a foreign national can enter into relationship or marriages with a South African.
Ibele yasalosa apa horre, molata oka kena dikamanu inkapa le nyalo ngjuang le mutu akwano Afrika bohoro.
It also provide for the powers of the Director General and the Minister in relation to the marriage officers or designation to marriage officers.
Ibezi esalosa apa, ma ta amo kamedi emoholo kapaa le tunama babi, le hobewa abasankaba na ba ikarabella ngodiso inkapa unyadi si.
Already in our interaction, the views that has been expressed to members of the committee which were continuously noting them.
Me ceceto meselri bilile onakapejana di bakinze orre sienrezwa otsona, oshe uile hasalosa horre na, koroba tvasaksama ikutlo orna, babatla horre, wezuwe juangweyape.
Which include amongst cohabiting, must increase the age limit.
Ze dinzatona diyachataba ena ya hudulamohaba tubasanyala na horre, otsamia horre, ishajale ona horre na, ietu akibatubadile mon dife.
Others who must include what you call, which is not on the bill, I must say, the polyandry.
Emwe eban basisintse horre, ekenwe, kentrwe ban hayio hanhan bili mona, elento ebizwa ngpoliandri. Poliandrike mayamo aomoto, wamu sadhi abang lebalekan baba nga tababana.
And the other issues is, ukungeena.
Emu taba kia okanela.
And some of the issues we raised yesterday is to review the marriage relationship within six months.
Emu taba ilenyatsola ma obani ke orre hona osajwa bocha le nyalo na kon, engwele engweya dikwaditzilete.
So we're highlighting these issues, that these are the issues that we're getting, but in the main, they appreciate the consultation of the, this single statute.
Ke ze dinzadinchatse orilenza ra ra raditsola anze rekopanalischa.
So again inviting you to interact with this marriage bill and I would invite Honourable Mokhali to outline how we are going to proceed.
Relukopa ke hona horre, lesele kenachabonhanze, leske la thaba ostlaksama ikutlo alo na, rta kopanda timokhali horre leena, azalepili katlakisiswehae.
Thank you very much, Honourable Chairperson.
Lebo ahaholo, midlasstuli achavanu.
Let me take this opportunity to greet the community of Machabing.
Rekenkamnyatsa onahu dumedyisa.
Taking your inputs.
Ke tla le salusesecha he, motati ohu reta olatena, arreta talakamsebezuah horre, refuma nema ikutlo alo.
We are going to take hands. Let's apply this amount, we will load ten hands.
Meretza super abal shoma.
And then we'll request you to come and sit on the chairs here in the middle.
Ibe relukopa horre, leso dula ditulo nse na se harmona.
And then you will approach the mic one by one.
Le tla tla monama eken kabongu.
When you approach the mic, you are going to introduce yourself, which organization you are representing.
Halie tla mona, le tlo buwa, motukamon otsaitibisa horre, kemang lipizola haile horre na, uyemezi mochatlo kapamohawfing, hayba honale mochatlo kapamoha, awyemezi.
And then you will indicate whether you support or you don't support the bill.
Ibe wasakisha horre, watseheza kapaha utseheze, sekamulaosena kapabiliyena.
And then you will proceed to make your input.
Ibe otsolapeli ka ostlaksama ikutloaha.
We are not taking questions, here it's an opportunity to make an input, to say, this is what I want, or this is what we want this bill to look like.
Haria rabi diposo ho han, ona kenyasawa lo na, awore leto ostlaksama ikutlo alo na, kahotu tubezingo horre na, le batla horre mulaokapa sekamulaosena, sebeka sipupe osefi.
So that is the process through which we are going to make inputs and if you have a written input, if maybe your input is very long, you can write it down and then submit it to parliamentary staff who are sitting there.
Rta sebeza kamohawah horre, retabua, hayba di chaiso kapadi chailo saha, dibatla diletelele ahaholo, oka di ngola fatse, kapaa hayba di sentsedi ngote, honale basankaba chavanu ba Parlamentin monama eban, ze ose ngoting, le tla difiti secha hubo.
So each person is going to be given load more than five minutes.
Motukamon otsafuaskepe le samitsosye misano fela.
And you just go straight to your point.
How to afela okena chabon muskanatinyatin.
So that is what we are requesting from the Commandant, repeat, if something motosa ibuile, oskai, oskai seriu truile agirangwalawalamu, so oskai buile za apa. If motu buile point ya how, oloto fela, no, I'm covered, then roll out there, ngwala fatse.
Salutri.
So, orile buile, thank you Chair.
Oh, okay, Chairperson, I'm gonna get a call eh, ke tla hetta, we agamokeka danke di. Ereke kala kala zoli la, la rightili. We'll start this side, wait, wait, we'll start this side. Kopa le pamise matzo, baba tlanhu, hutreza di, di input. Ke tla kala kawa ena Bishopo, ke tla kame, ke tla kantatekama ni, lezo, yeah, kenantati. Ke tla kawa ena mama, okanat. Yes, you can follow, okake nenantati. Osanza nonale matzo amangamu. Osanza nonale matzo amangamu. Okay, okanatla mama, okanatla lo enantati. Reshotaga ba bedifela, olale ba ba bedikamu before retagam. Okay, nonale matzo kamua ma bedi, okanatla nantati, lo ela wa skipaseshube. Okanatla nantati.
Thanks. No, we are coming for second round, that's okay, give first ten, we are the second round. All right, eh, reganara kalanati. Daddy Bishop?
Eh, ma dibulishe. Di vuya ughuti intini kue ituba ili, mnandi wundenzekile.
Greetings, Chairperson, I would like to thank you for the opportunity given to me, my name is.
Dinwundenzekile.
Denzekile.
Ifana kutopo.
My surname is Toppo.
Tiveragumbuwe Progressive Pastors Council of South Africa.
I am from the Organization of Progressive Pastors Council.
Yeah, mnandi funuguti ipili, ah, di kasi ngamangam.
I would like to say I don't fully support the bill.
Yeah, kunese osumatisa, funuguti dis, dis kanga anyapa.
There are certain clauses that I would like to give my views on here.
Eh, ben funuguti issebe.
Oh, I would like to say the department.
Yeah, legally chongu kutipam gugubakobe nemichad.
Before there are marriages.
Kubene ndo, esingabi za guguti, eh, pre-marriage.
Before there were marriages, there was what was called pre-marriages.
Eh, abandu ba fundiswe, ngobo ni swaguti, ba funegaba katalela, nejengaka enkama, manditizoba sefemilisimpinesi di banayo.
Where two individuals are cancelled about what they are actually getting themselves into.
Enye indoye leyoguti, kunale ndo leyogutufuma ne, mvako gubba abandu besbe chatilo, bayachukaan.
Um, there's a high rate of divorce after people have been married.
Di funa ubuzai sebe okanyen, manditinjenkakanina nilapano, genisintoko.
I would like to ask the department rather, I would like to ask the honourable members as you are here.
Uguti nina nigena chongu, uki, abandu ba chatileyo, kunaba ba chugeneo, le nani ele mngeli, ele chatileyo, kuneli ele chugeneo.
Did you notice that the rate of divorces is higher than the people that are actually married?
So, ngamanyama zeseingati nina, nini abe ni vuyela, le ndo uki, kubene nemichadu le chukileyo.
It seems as though you are endorsing divorces.
Koba mshambo kuti nina nisa, ufumanugu di nini aba nina nisosebenza, ken gubabandu ngabe chugana, uklapo nin kunomsebenzo minz.
Because this exercise would seem like a tick box, tick box exercise to you because then you would have more work to do when there are more divorces.
Di funa ubuzuku di, kunaba o magistrate, i court up, i court, i Justice Department, i call up.
I would like to find out if the Department of Justice is here.
Kaabo abe ben funuguti siklinanise, gubongoba, kaaba ba chugani sa benka katalu, kunabandu ana ba koi, ezoba zinke tama, ezoba ngabandu ana ba zokanga lena geskondosame.
I actually wanted to pose more questions to the department because they are the ones that take the decisions, they break families without realizing that there are kids who will be without mothers and fathers.
Koba kualone lsebe ili, ele, ela se, manditienkuntenya makian, alike li ti, liza uktibani sabantu kala kungani, why, who, this, all those stuff, libuzelo mi buzole, YWS, zongezo 5WS, albuzi, le veleli ngeli leje, le chugani sabantu.
Because the very same department does not have like an intervention phase where they sit down with families, find out where the problem is, what the problem is, and try and unite the families before breaking them apart.
Eh, dakola imizu zyamse izope la, Honourable Chair, di funuguti nje, eyo kubela. Eh, maskesi chonge nugu di tinasi ngaba fundis, abafundis, singena pa pakati, pakati kuale ndo, utabandu ngabe chugan, abafundis, ngawa bangenela, uki, ba councila abantu, ni tinini nanen zani ngale ndo, inkos.
As I conclude, I would like to say as pastors, we are actually the initiators because we unite these families and I would like to ask what parliamentarians are saying about this, thank you.
Eh, nalibizolaka ken na, Matlakalamutlu.
My name is Matlakalamutlu.
Ke zwama ne Nala Bothaville.
I am from Nala Bothaville.
I'm the Chairperson of Community Police Forum stationed in Sabothaville.
Ki modulasstuluwa Police Forum is stationed in Sabothaville.
Kia lebo.
Thank you.
Na, nto ekitlo ezangtsitsinyo, kapaa ekitlo hanyezana nlyona, homusuwaruna.
My recommendation or the thing that I'm going to disagree with, with our Parliament today.
Ekare, harifita dikamanu, zawatubaba bedibanyala na, dilemo di ke eketsua, hoske wa tunganawa eighteen years old nalibika rabelo banu, unse alisolu, babangbaruna.
I wish that when we get to, when we get to partnership or marriages, the age of marriage should increase because we can't say that a child who is eighteen years old is good enough to be married.
Kenaha na kizerinzeu, di ezanghura manyalo akala, no banu wa na uhulelaka harongudi kano zalanyalo, asoka ahola.
I think that's one of the reasons why there are a lot of divorces because a child grows up in a marriage where the vows of marriages are not understood.
Yabo bedi, hakitlo ba motelile, yabo bedi ki ena ya, manyalo asitebu.
The second one is the issue of polygamous, polygamy.
Ki hanyezana ho han, lehore motu amme akanyala banu nababanga.
I disagree with the fact that a woman can marry a woman.
Meh, lahaba kaba isale rada, me wa katalan dati hakata.
Even if they can make noise, a woman gets tired, a man doesn't get tired.
Under GBV, honale FAE nesa sebediswi.
Under GBV, there's this app that is not used.
Ha, FAE dipula wa nozabun, tadi banse baribulaya hakana, hutro ba joangharisere banyetse bale bangada.
When men are killing us like that, like this, how's it gonna be?
Pa to ipuwa, ibe barikeda.
When they have a lot of them.
Banabe solalaka balayza le rada, we akatala.
Even if you can make noise, we get tired, a man doesn't get tired, thank you very much.
Eh, yereken kemyatona, kildu medisa kofela maytapeli.
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to greet your leaders.
Eh, kildu bamiyaton, orufuma ngaro, loko na ribele, chaila.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to give our input.
Eh, kizegishema documente, nanzegishema kbonora, ona nixi erikarai, kahananana lyona, infecti, all over here because Ike shema tutemo, na kintose temare, ze lonenze isaindu apen, nse aginilezwa apela na kwenye fitile.
I'm looking at this document and I realize that there are a lot of things we can't dis, we cannot disagree with because a lot of things that are happening, that are here are things that have already been happening.
We are a traditional, traditional belief, silly religious beliefs. So this is a democratic, democratic country, you know, reditensin, like for instance myself, I give more to women, I'm interested in polygamy, where I give polygamy, I begin making that eh, I give male, it's on a mare, eh, honale about what you mean lah.
According.
So it's not about what I feel, as you can feel as well, it's a democratic, it's a democratic country.
As a democratic country, so it doesn't matter how I feel.
Yale, nto important, fela kone, kwa la fala, fana kaimputena from experience, ke kisipaka, inting, kya tinga pojoan, kapaitinga pa ehyo.
I want to give this input based on my experience.
I'll suggest to Obeli, eh, what you, what you call this, um, traditional, I mean to say not marriage counseling before, eh, ba tubanya lana, koru negida isha isha.
I suggest that there should be marriage counseling before people get married.
Important because yerekena le nyalo, yerekena relax, excited, tikabata balera to fail, kesa nse, onan tusenata, le nyalo is not about only love, onan tusenata, they involved like values, it was a garden soka fail, that's what I did, religious, religious belief, traditional belief, not to be involved in that. So negitla, suggest a fellow government eh, haika ya, ya ita horre, Obeli, marriage counseling, ba tubatsibo, honaba kinyala, we commit, we commit osor na, ki inyo kenamia na, because some of the things are shared, ufumanagu akena, akena, roja ulat, van tusenititi, maybe ulat, kobe ulana hana, otherwise.
I would suggest that there should be marriage counseling because many people get into marriages because they're excited or because of love, but they don't really understand, so I would really suggest that there should be marriage counseling before they get into marriage.
Eh, ke taka tala fela kayinto, kayinto isha ona, where I come from, come from, ke toha, Virginia, what name?
I come from Virginia, what name?
Eh, ke, I'm a member of the ANC, Brent Timofina Marehe, I give weaka as a member of the ANC.
I'm not looking as a member of ANC.
Make a level platform eh, na, kala bo.
Your name? Eh, the name is.
My name is.
Kia ledu medisa, banabe suka faila.
I greet you all in the name of the Lord.
Ki Memama Jola.
The name is Memama Jola.
Shaniakaloom.
I come from Nyakaloom.
Utileka CWP, marikileka ki Church of Christ.
I came with CWP, but I come from Church of Christ.
Koriki emimon, ki wutla fela, hori kile ahaholo, kitutomeele.
I'm standing here feeling like I should cry because the thing that is spoken here.
Ukuwa, kali nyalo, le nyalo, kori kintwasonpeile, esabatitisila, esabatongori, ibele le basadi baba, baba nga ta, enalipahu delo, ebata musadi alimoon.
We talk of marriage which doesn't need more than one woman, it has jealousy, needs one woman, doesn't need many women.
Kori kitobua, banu, kitobua, hemba kutwa, koro zalolaka, ho kini lebanena, ke nyatsu, kini rilimori, eighteen years eh, hobani kineki sinanda, te, ke na le me feela, ka, ka ohah. ka, ka ohapela, haka kineki rindate, ompa mona, ya, ya kitla mraata, lena ngate, kelle rilimote eighteen, ebire ulaban sia, luba anaba hayba eighteen, nta ezwa zalong, horu abope.
Me twarenjoa, ndateu, ba, ya, ba, ba, ba re tu saore, ba toloke, so, lino bua hanyani, ba fesbaka, ba toloke, and then.
Yes, so I, I was married at eighteen.
Ere ba fela te, tele duwulempele, detla wa hap.
I was married at eighteen and uh, the, the husband died and left me with eight children.
Kineki morata.
I loved him and he loved me.
Tu ruide sompo.
I had respect, I stayed.
How bua kantwe ebabe tu baba mbayiyesa, ngoba tu baba tangiyesa, utro kaleka bua kawa na pele, na wena, utilewa.
When you speak of things that you want other people to do, you should start by talking about yourself as to what it is that you are doing.
Manyalo ama bedili mudimo hawad, ama ngata, mudimo hawadumeli, emba talonyana iteni nyadumela.
Polygamy, God doesn't allow, but then divorce is there, is allowed.
Horo mosari ha alimobe, walukeela, omutwele.
That when a woman is ugly, you can leave her.
O fa chance ya mosari abobe di, esengwe ya braroom.
God gives you a second chance for the second wife, not to the third.
Awana motwe ya kadula nditwempi, ebawa yo kotofale.
Nobody can stay with an ugly thing and then still burying the, 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 the burden.
Ndateh, hahate la banaba hayi, urba shokyohe ma, melo tanezi abehante.
A woman is supposed to be good and a man is supposed to be good.
Koto kalime la marilia ba twela, busiu ba ta ba ma tawendi tevene, mbayeta misolo.
You are allowing them to go out to the taverns and do ostracious things.
Danidi, haunteka ba etuang, bo me balimonse na baba nyenyana, ofeta wana basangwa, baba bi ahulu, lekama hanu, abana sompo ba likanin baba wana, ba tu bawa maseba na besu religi.
The women today have no respect and they are very young, they don't have respect for, for their husbands.
Emba ekadile man motu nkreya lekana.
It started where we were, we were told we are equal.
Mudimo asareya lekana.
Even though God said we are not equal.
Ndateh kiso yalilapa.
A man is the head of the family.
Eh, kileka rapela mudimo ri, kiso mpe.
I pray to God that I have respect and everyone can have respect.
Longolala ni nyalo, lireng, hasitza na tetisa lera tu homutu.
A marriage certificate and a ring are not the things that bring love to a person.
Lera tu aleka pilou.
Love is in the heart, it is in the heart.
Eli kelle ba bozaba sita hunu na wana, lera tu lahuli tenka pilou, hautakale shana.
You should ask them when they get to you, is there love in your heart? It comes from God.
Yaga kibuwa karreni mulikanuaka, kiri ki, elan kisa monu na kaelasa, kajo, lera tu ki monu na waka, hasirenyena.
I spoke about a ring and then it was hurting my finger, I threw it away, I said, love is not the ring, love is my husband.
Hampulele busiu habosa, ilisatretala sonta abansia, koba lera tu lineleli pilou, lineleli simowu, ki mosereka sompo ye.
I respected him and then when he left me, uh, I was at peace because the heart, uh, the love was in the heart.
Kilebu ile, renalebana.
Thank you, we have children, thank you very much. And may God make home affairs prosper, men lie, men are liars.
Orre atale sitepu.
For him to start polygamy.
Orre, hakina mosari, mosari waka unchadi.
He says he doesn't have a wife, his wife divorced him.
Wa na kahuutwa, ya mocha, ya akhaleso ngonyalo, osa adumela na linjati.
When a young child wants to get married, she listens to that.
Kyalewa ndateh, hau shaka morao, mosari ote.
Thank you, mama.
Thank you.
Um, good morning to.
Yeah, can we, eh, we want to request that because this is an important session. Uh, there, our team are recording there and members here, they are also taking notes. So that at the point we are going to deliberate, we have understood what are the issues, so if a person, avolela, libertamazoa, let me interrupt, eh, it, it may not serve the purpose because we are only interested on the person who was on the podium, so I just request that eh, there may be issues that are interesting, but at least let's demobilize our excitement so that we focus on the, on the issues. Thank you.
Hansiro ba matzo, taramurope matzonse rikutla wani, ribatalo, ma mela, mutuna wani ra, ra rekwa dalemani, re opé, re kete, re fe mutu kansia monama iki.
Good morning esteemed members of parliament. Kalivizo, kina palasachaka, I'm a member and a citizen of this country. Uh, I'm a member of this municipality.
Ke palasachaka, kile lokula ANC, ibileki.
I never said kile lokula ANC, kizeki member ya community, ene ya machavie.
Okay, kina palasachaka, ki member ya secha, ya mona, tulonyerilongo yo.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate for effect that parliament has come to Machavie municipality.
Retave se tul, ntra hori, parlamenta kile monashave, samata, samonachave.
Uh, it's my humble plea to members of this committee.
Kyikuela, koba tu bali, ba komiti.
As a young person staying in South Africa.
Jakamo cha, ona mu Afrika Bora.
We are not informed by the laws that govern our country.
Hari itzimela usintle, lunkuruki oneezama hisana haruna.
My humble plea to the parliament and the president himself.
Ki kuela, kupa lamentele, nemo presidente kabue na.
Can you make sure that we are highly informed so that at the end of the day, we can hold you accountable?
Le kanu kuriutal, ribonse, kuri itidilo, kuri kwanore, le kwanozama ikarabe, le kwanuarabe la duzidin zedrele.
I work at Machavie municipality.
Ki diramo Machavie municipality?
I'm a public participation officer.
Kina public participation officer, ya mo.
It's highly disturbing when parliament and provincial government come to Machavie.
Kuwa, ku tusavo troku, haye luhuri, parlamenta, le ba province ba tamo, mo Machavie.
And then public participation eh, is only afforded or awarded to only a few offers.
Ebere luhurukutza karulo hachab, kufua fela ba tu nyana, ba palu ekutlas, ba bamalu.
I'll make an example, I, I stay in Virginia.
Eric, ki diraska, kina mo Virginia?
Uh, Virginia was given, I believe, two taxes to come here.
Virginia, huno kunsitwa di taxes, eh, kana mpe di kutla mo.
Two taxes, it means it's equivalent to how many therapy people.
Koba na kala, di taxes epe dedikatsa, ba tu baba kana nseti.
It's not even one percent of population of Virginia.
Ah, si le percenté, ele u ya ba tu baba dula. Kuvignia.
Can we be educated so that tomorrow we can make informed decisions so that we can hold you accountable?
Haru tiwe, kuri kwanore, kai itidilo, kuri kwanore, le mo kulu na, esee, le zama ikarabe lo mo kusho.
Not just only accountable, also to play, to play that participatory, participatory role that we as communities were supposed to play.
Re sa, teka, ibile re zaleka olu, le kwanore, le kuka zaka rolo, modilo ntselun kuri diare ama, ntselun kuri, diare affecta, re diramo to.
It is my responsibility as an individual in South Africa to know my rights and my responsibility.
Ke ika rabelo, a, ka, yakamu Afrika Bora, kuitidi twanelo zaka, le kuitu kuri, ke insektu antinkisi di.
Oftentimes, uh, parliament, Eva, I think shocked when we do not know what exactly is that we're supposed to do and when we don't do things according to how they should be done simply because we lack information.
Koli hansirifela, zare sa diridilo, katsila, ele kantata, kuri benere sa itu kuri, sentenete, tuanse beridireya.
Now, getting into why we're here, uh, for this bill today, I supported the bill but also, also pleading to the committee to say that.
Akeza namudin klenza, za seserebe ilenfano kumpi, kibatla hapo kuku pa, le komiti, ki kuela mo yo na.
As our constitution recognizes that, um, they respect our cultures.
Yakaa, eh, mona ote, kudu melaa kura, ba kuta di zozaru na.
South African culture is brought.
Sitwa Afrika Bora, sibuleklesa tuluxi.
When it comes to customary marriages, can we please make sure that we are more informed on these issues so that at the end of the day, eh, when it comes to civil union and customary marriages, uh, there are not so many contradictions, especially when it comes to the law part of the marriage itself.
Are tsa monsengali nyalo, lerilivitan lasizo, lele nyalo, lelele, kileli kwa disutu, lelele, lerilivitan la, lasuwa, reka, rekaliviza ya. Batu abaneli kicho, eh, eh, tseti, ba kwanore kutlaluhanya, ba kwanore lukuka faruluhanya, maharen kama nyalo a, arbuankao.
And also so that we create education because the very same education is the very same one that's going to make sure that as the communities, we are more informed and the more informed we are, uh, the less problems we'll create for our government and we will also be able to at least live a better life because we will be informed.
Eh, ke, harfeza kui itirifilwe tutu, re kwanore kutlaluhanya, di lozedi, kuto na libono, le mo puso, kune retaberi, irina likijo, re tala luhanya, wana yakasicha.
Can we also make sure that as we are looking into the marriage bill, there's also age somewhere somehow in there? Can we also revisit Children's Act as well as other acts that talks to the age of a child so that at the end of the day, we can talk to things in their own entirety, not just contradictions because when you go to Children's Act, it tells what a child is and then eh, like the whole lot of things that hence I said, can we please have education so that at the end of the day, we are more informed in order for us to be able to make the decisions that are correct regarding other things that involves us so that we don't contradict and do things the wrong.
Are utu hapé, le kamila we emenge twanali eh yava na, keso ne seki rinri, ba tu haba rutiwu, ba tu kwanore kutlaluhanya di lozedi, ri itilu kuri, ehji, ehri leng, ebulela kuri, ke, ke moana, ehji, ehri leng, ebulela kuri motu, ki motu omtu, ya no harika utu, re fela zari na likicho, eh, teneleti, ki yaka, yakaki yaka, ki katala tutu, kuta dira kuri di lozidi, ne bono, kwanore kutlaluhanya, sente kuri di lozana, haru na ditza maya.
Thank you very much.
Kilebu kafuni na ha.
Eh, du malamo to, eh, libizo la regeta ba Ramukwad.
The name is Tab Ramukwad.
Kitwa Lejolipu, to community development consultant.
From Lejolipu, to community development consultant.
I'm the executive member.
Kese to sa petas.
No, I don't support this bill completely.
Akeze itzimela ona ho hanghang.
Yeah, the reason being, koba ne, for as much as we understand eh, what is happening in our continent, I will refer to General Mama Gaddafi in Libya.
Le baka baka korrela, ilorre atwa roeza lan kontinente inya rona ya Africa. Kitla, ke, ke, ke ra halo hanyani, kibuwa ka, mu ya tapelwa, mesengwa Libya, mu Mama Gaddafi.
Uh, the general in Libya, when the two couples eh get married, there was something the government of Libya was giving to these people to show or when people get together and say, we are getting married, it's a courage that thing and it's natural and it is exactly what eh, we are expecting from a man and woman.
Nto e unde ngetsa halanera ba tuwa bediba kopana, banya la na, ebere hoba le meropozo, ebaya ufua, ele ho ananaela, kopano yeu ya ba tuwa baby.
The culturally tradition of the people, not to impose anything from the government because it's a government taking to. But maybe they don't even check the principles of culture and those of the tradition. Okay, so, monana, nanti kitramwe salo sakore, eh, there should be a way to which a government is playing a role in a marriage content because we are poor and as we are poor, it is clear that eh, our marriage won't go well. There will always be all these things because if I'm not working, the woman is not working, obviously, the children are from the poverty.
Se shoka ang, ke hori, muso waro na lo ona, hobeti ngitzya ninyana, zeba ngutu setaka, zo ona, haba tu banya la na, ahulu hulu haye ba futza na, hobaning, le nyalo, le tata, ahulu, yale moe bang, ba tu ba futza ne, kitakala, litsotla, oze fetalan, le baney.
Uh, so, for purposes of this bill, I understand it was for that, but eh, in nature ba tuwa holo, renale di religiene, renale di believe it's different, so ebwa katsila mp, how to motuwa me, otamile abele, ble ba lekan, ba feetam alimoo.
We have, we have our own beliefs and eh, our own religions and eh, different cultures. With us, it's something that is unacceptable eh, for a woman to have eh, many partners or to be in a polyandrous marriage.
Eh, di buitabule monana, they are very correct, I can dispute, but to add in what they're saying, kore fela, government eh, etame ba pale rolu, manyalonga, ba tu baling, the South Africans, because why I'm saying that eh, if, ke, ke, like, ke halusi tore, eh, I might not be employed. Kore, haru cheka fela, le motu lungu, it's a second class, only everything. This marriage will be suppressed by the looks of the second class, the way because everything encourage, again, twenty, eh, we bonam, but if it's a lower, you tend to be discouraged.
Our government must be supportive to our marriages because sometimes the problems are created by eh, the different status among the community because eh, if you are poor as a couple and when you look around, there are those who are at a better class and they are affording, it becomes a problem.
So, kamonzoketela fela kore, are practicing whatever that is legislated for parliament to communities and if refuma na ore, there are a lot of loopholes to at least to run out minister, whatever it is, let us make inputs that will encourage maybe the coming generations to do the good things because in this current marriages, there's a lot of things that are not known, haden courage ba tu nyala na because osa ne me, otsu abluwe kentate, ndatekunale na wa abizua, how to la sheva, those things are days we gain nothing, they too give economic in that family. So, leaving the Bill of Rights, eh, chapter two, your constitution, yes, halo sorry, we have a right to work. So if we are not working, really, there's nothing that will prosper because poverty, you know, ba palongo, we are negative in our lives.
Eh, agilebu esabaka, senisa kisi fumani.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Lemonya kila kufumani. Libizo lakaki Elias Mslakwana.
The name is Elias Mslakwana.
Ki lama ninaala, ki emesi, mchaso wa, wasiruti, and le mensfora.
I am from Nala and I'm representing. I am from Nala and I'm representing the men's forum and the religious body. I don't support this bill. I have some reasons. Especially when it comes to marriage. Because Hebrews, Chapter 7 says.
Chapter 13, verse 7.
Chapter 13, verse 7 says, "Marriage must be respected among the community." Marriage is something that must be respected. One other thing that is a little bit of a problem is the way we were raised. Because we were raised in religious families. Now, when it comes to marriage at a later stage in life, we find that it is something different from the teachings that we got when we grew up. When we grew up, we didn't have a problem of sleeping in the same room or sleeping in the same bed as brothers. But today, it becomes difficult because there are so many things that are happening. The problem that we are encountering is the problem of the same-sex marriages. Because we were not raised like that. Even in our Christian religion, it is something that is not acceptable. I'm asking myself a question whether when our government make the laws, do they consult the Bible or they just make legislation without any consultation to the word of God? It creates a problem to us based on our religion because we grew up following the biblical teachings. One other thing that is a problem, especially among the young children, is that as they grow up, they see this practice of same-sex marriages. And then it becomes something that is normal to them. And when they grow up, they also practice that. My plea to you is that when these types of legislations are made, maybe there is a need also to go and consult with the churches or the religious bodies so that these children can learn these things from a young age. Lastly. There are too many changes. But the communities that are always left behind are the farm traders. They are in the dark as they don't have even any information about these different types of marriages. Thank you.
Do you remember how you saw?
Greetings. My, my name is Mampai Mpeys. I'm from Botaville, Botaville in Nala Municipality. I'm from the organization called Bokamoso Rehab. We are against the bill. For the following reasons. We noticed that the way this bill is structured, if we can agree with it, it will lead to a situation where, as the people, we are going to perish. Because if we agree with the bill, we are saying there should be same-sex marriages. We are a little bit confused in this matter. Because we ask ourselves questions in these same-sex marriages of, where are the children going to come from? Or is it practiced by people who were married before, who already have their own children? We must encourage our children from a tender age. They must be educated right from the school about different marriages. So that when they grow up, they can have the right choice as to which one they do decide to follow. What we are observing nowadays is that as we raise our children at home, we teach them about the Bible and the religion. But when they get to school, they can see that what they are being taught at home is not practiced at the school. So we play with you that Christianity or religion must be taken back to schools so that our children can get the opportunity to learn the right thing from a tender age. Thank you.
Greetings.
Kalibito, get Temba Ntabeni. Get to Alan Rich, old thirty-six.
The name is Temba Ntabeni. I come from Alan Rich. The truth is, I'm a pastor, but here I'm at the men's forum. The reason why we formed the men's forum is because we want to bring back the dignity of men. Because when men are not working, there are problems at home. I'm also pleading that the laws be simplified. Because now these rights that we have really form a lot of problems, these rights of democracy. I have girl children and they don't have a mother anymore. And now these girl children, when they see boys and then the boys are killing our girls. But now when these girls see the boys and then the boys speak the words saying that, "I love you", all they see is an ATM machine for money. So I'm pleading. So as I'm pleading that men be given jobs. And I'm also looking at this paper here. And then I realized that it speaks of women marry more than one man. And I do not agree with that. So I'm saying that now the problem that we have is other men are marrying each other and then now others are addicted to drugs and there's only a few of us men. So that is the problem. So I was just pleading that. When a man is not working at home or in the house, he is not being respected. He's treated like dirt. Because I realize that these young boys that are called Ben Tens and these passport boys, they are better than us now. Because as a man, when you're not working, you are not being respected or looked at. So I'm pleading to all women that if you're making more money than a man, still please keep on respecting the men. Because even men, when they run to these slave queens, they still come across the same problems. Thank you. The name is Roger. From Pomolo. I'm going to support this bill from the National Parliament. That came before me are all the people. So I don't know if I should say I'm Ntabi Roger. I've heard that it's a problem now for people to declare their organizations. Because I heard that the coalition is here to stay. And I'm from the
African National Congress.
African National Congress. I support this bill because I believe that whatever initiative came from national has been discussed and sorted first. The speakers that came before me speaking that when a man is not working, when he's married. There are fights in the marriages. I don't know what poverty is because I believe that poverty is subjective. As people, we are the ones that are creating it by ourselves. A woman spends more than three thousand, maybe, on alcohol, the money that she gets from the man. So and then when she wakes up in the morning, that money is gone. So we wonder what poverty is. What is poverty? What I do not support from this bill is for a woman to have more than one husband. As a man, two for me is enough. I'm already crying even.
Ki so ba jeti.
And then it takes me off budget.
Ale mu, ale mu, kabawa beji ba leka, amutwanda te. Eh, amutwame, nta te ale mu fele omleka.
One or two is enough for a man, but for a woman, one husband is enough.
Eh, kyale bo.
Thank you very much.
Alright, eh. Retong kama zo agere kayli kamo. So, retong kalagamo. Retong kama matzo aten. I want to take ten hands from this side. Uh, one, two, three, three, blue. Four, mama. Five, nta te. Six, seven, eight hundred. Ke la ke la hundred. It's how many left?
What says Baba Guy?
Three. Do we still have hands there? Do we have hands? Okay, eh, let's come this side. We'll start with you. Yeah, agake a hundred. Eh, one. Eh, two mama, yeah. Yeah. So, like I care. So, ra ko pa here ager. Let's, let's deal with the bill, the provisions of the bill. Ager? Eh, reska, reska eh, oh, ska tuha zilemu, so huakan thozedi. In zelwa, they are not related to the bill, ager? Eh, this is your opportunity, are re. Ore blelo remola o, obatla obe juan. That's it. So let's stick to the bill, ra ko pa, eh, ba tu bezu. So, regakala eh, kawa a hundred. Thank you.
Man bule le ma wait. Di ngundla nga niso ya manzo otu. Eh, kamsa efa ni nyeleso, o kaha. Ona ika. Indile ka hi li.
Greetings, honorable members. My name is Dadondai. He recited his claim before I stopped him, so I'm not gonna interpret that.
Eh, ndizau kapula nje, ndikali ndinyatelise, izi mfuno zo mte to kule bill.
I'm going to begin by the needs of this bill and give my opinions or views.
Eh, kulezi pagamis, wenzauz pagamis.
With these views that I'm going to give here.
Ndikapele uku ba uadvocate ukonna apa pagati.
I've realized that we have an advocate eh, here with us today.
Ngoko bendis outandu ba man te ta aze anikumbuzi.
I would like the advocate, when I speak, that they remind you of what I had, I had said.
Le billing and.
Remind you of what I had, I had said.
Le billing and. Su kelo ezili shume.
These ten chapters.
Ezin, ezisi pozo kuzo.
Eight of those chap, ten chapters.
Aze ambisani nomkakosi sekuwetu.
Are not aligned with our constitution.
Asiko ke izitengoku ba sebezi kambisana ngazu.
There's no need for us to debate on that.
And is eh, ku si pagamis, wese, ismese lo zalomte.
Let me come to the objects of this act.
Eh, panzuwezi mese lo zalomte.
Under these objects of this act.
Ukonna is mese lo, ezimbi ni kupela.
There are two objects that I want to deal with.
Ezikuazi yo, uku ti zambisani nomteto sisekuwetu.
That are aligned with our constitution.
Ngoko, ngazo zis, sikelo.
Because of that.
Ziya tinga eka ba sebe na yo, ipili yeli shogo.
We need to have such a bill or a bill of this nature.
Eh, eyo kala ile eh kuza utwi. Eh kuze ku kape lisise, nokshoni pa imichado yetu.
The first one is to respect our marriages.
Ngoko eyo, eyo sbini nditi i na yo, iya vumelana nomteto siseku. Ngeyoku ti imichado ise ipalisu.
The second one that aligns with our constitution is the one that refers to marriages being documented or registered.
Eh, ezizinye izi kelo ezilapa.
The other chapters that are here.
Eh, objects.
Sorry, objects.
Zine ngaki yoku ba eh, mse kelo, izi mfuno zo mchad.
They have problems like the needs of marriages in general.
Eh, asikuazu ku ba singa ati singa bandu ba semninge zima Africa. City, si kela ngo ku, umchadu, uba uben umchadu, ufanelu bena one, two, three.
We cannot therefore say as South African citizens, this is what a marriage should entail.
Because eh, oko kala ngo ku enkolo si shukene.
Because in terms of cultural and traditional beliefs, we are different.
Umte to sisekelo, usinekela amantla, uku ti silaule imichado yetu.
Our constitution therefore empowers us to do um, as or what we believe in with our marriages.
Ukonna eh, eh si pagamis, wesi ti family law.
They are, there's an object called family law.
Ngoko ke uku ti zize sukuazu ku ishoni pa.
In order for us to respect it.
Indo ta nga anye nomfasi nga mnye, makaseben zise inkolo yaake, ne si kolaake, uku ngene ni imichadwe.
Each man, each woman should therefore subscribe to their religious and cultural beliefs when it comes to marriage.
Uh hulu men den jongo mpati so.
The, uh, the government, as the government, sorry, as the, as a main office in the land.
As a representative.
As a representative.
Of the people.
Of the people.
Makayenze intando iya bandu.
The government as a representative of the people should listen to what South African citizens are saying and do as South African citizens are advising.
Umte to sisekelo wetu.
Our constitution.
Iti uh hulu men de, iya ubango hulu men de, opatwenge, tando iya bandu.
It clearly states that the government is the government for the people.
Ngoko ke bagut.
Therefore.
Ku ya tinga eka uku ba kule bill.
We, it is needed that in this bill.
Singa pati abantu.
We should not tell South African citizens what to do.
Asna kuazu, uku regulate imichad.
We cannot therefore regulate marriages.
Singa zange si pulu mte to siseker.
When we did not um, align, or when we did not, when we did not breach the constitution.
Indo eh, eh ba luleki le yo.
What is important?
Uku ti kule nte la, ezisa usebenza ngaayo.
The way in.
Isa ufakela nje, yu registration ni imichad.
Under chapter five, we will add the registration of marriages.
Ezina kuazu, kuti si fake, panzuwe, chapter two.
Which we can therefore add under chapter two.
Oh, chapter six.
Chapter six.
Eh, nga panze nengu, goku ti, kupalisu nja ni imichadu etriti weyo.
Apart from how divorced or collapsed marriages were registered.
And then, oh, chapter seven.
Chapter seven.
Where's the chapter in this busy layo?
With these chapters that I've, I've.
Advocate asiko, azamzani nomteto siseker.
These chapters that I have mentioned here are not aligned with the constitution.
Eh, ku, ku konna lente tu si ti yu jurisprudence.
There's a saying or there's a phrase that we call jurisprudence.
Eh, in vela eh, leyo umte tu kando angaayo.
The way in which the law was formed.
Uyenzo la, intando yeninzi la bandu.
The law should be, um, should work for South African citizens.
Asikuazu uku ngayenzo umte.
We cannot therefore not follow the law, what is constituted.
Oza ufula, kwayona, umkakosi sekuwetu.
Laws that will then breach our constitution.
Le umte to lena sebezi kela le bill.
We've asked this bill.
Ngenla, la yoku ba besine ngaki, nge section nine.
Because we had a problem with section nine.
Imichadu ekona iki lana no section nine.
These laws do not align with section nine.
Goku ne pile kwezi chapter ndite tengazu.
So this bill in the chapters that I've mentioned here.
Ziki lana no section nine.
They do not align with chapter nine, section nine.
No section fifteen.
They also do not align with section fifteen.
Ziki lana no section thirty-one.
As well as section thirty-one.
Ziki lana no section eh, two hundred and thirty-six.
As well as section two hundred and thirty-six.
Ngoko ke, diya te la.
I ask.
Ne na ke eh, eh zi tunya ze, ze tu.
The honorable members.
Uku ba mani ke ni bui se leni le billi enfu.
Can you please take this bill back?
Iya kalisua panzi ilungiswengel ntlele fanel.
So that it can be amended accordingly.
I pa, eh kuazu pasa i certification ye, ye constitution.
It cannot not be aligned with the constitution.
Elamloke be.
As I conclude.
Ndikela ke obandi pagamise esisi te.
I plead as follows.
Eh, oka ni ndi, ni ti ipetishin.
Oh, you call it a petition.
Di petishin na ke ni nanjenga ma lunga parliament.
I petition you as members of parliament.
Uku ba mani bui se leni isitima sentru yeninzi.
Please bring back the dignity of South African citizens.
Eh, i parliament eh, saati.
We said to the parliament.
Ngen, etwa yabanya saati, People's Assembly.
We said it's the People's Assembly.
And ifunu uku ba ke ngo ku ze si fuma ne nte la encha. Goba ingati ngo ku inkunda zamachala, zizo esee People's Assembly.
I don't want now us to start something new because it seems as if the, the constitution is the, 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 sorry.
Our courts have.
Our courts, yes, are the ones that are leading.
The People's Assembly.
Have tend to be the People's Assembly.
Our parliament seem not to be listening to the people. And as a result of that, we are now getting more and more calls that are now heard from only the courts. That is diluting our jurisprudence as a society. We still need a situation where we can take actual decorum of the parliament to make it the People's Assembly. I thank you all.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lerato Chobani. I am a community development worker at Le Jolipuzo District Municipality. Lerato Chobani.
Lebizoké Lerato Chobani.
I am a community development worker.
Sebeza, community development.
At Le Jolipuzo District.
Sfakensalijalipuzo.
In the office of the speaker.
Kantoro nyamza maiswa di pisaa.
Eh, let me thank the honorable members from parliament, okay, for this fruitful engagement on the marriage bill.
Kile weto za parliament, teka di pisano se na, ze kaba neha kanama ba billi, esu kamula ose na, sa manyalo.
I do support the bill.
Kyai se sa billi ena.
But eh, I just disagree with the age which one, one should get married, which is eighteen.
Nteki sa dumelanin leo na, keskipili sa dilemo, se na zebe wa angta hori moto, akake na le nyalo.
Eh, when coming to our communities here in Le Jolipuzo, we have five local municipalities under Le Jolipuzo.
Arashavadi va katse na cha boru na za Le Jolipuzo. Renalovo maspala ba ba shanu va katla za Le Jolipuzo.
In this hall today, we have four municipalities and then one is not present.
Kahara holo ye na, honale batu batwa ngu maspale mbaba. Me e mo maspala, wa fushanu, hanabi emedi go tenkwa.
Could the portfolio committee please assist us? Because Tukulohor is one of the municipality which is not here today.
Ra ko pa, rekomi tiya sebezu, eritusea holo, ba ni maspala watukulohor, konna osinangu emedi kajeno kwa.
The municipality is with, within hundred and twenty radius. So they were not granted the opportunity to be here today.
Maspala eh no, ha holi ha holo le mona, mpa ne haba fuamnye sa wa orba beti kwa.
So we can't have, we can't be having this kind of engagements without engaging all of our community members.
Juale, ha waloka ho re rebeli di ko pa no zamfuta ona, mpa re sa kenye le sa di thotsu ose sa tikulohor ya boru.
I also do not support that a woman should have many husbands.
I ki sehe zilta ba ena ya ho re, musadi alemon, abele bana baba ngata.
Because of our religious backgrounds.
Kaliva kaladi tumelo saro.
We did also invite the LGBATQI plus community to be with us today. But I can sense that they are not present.
Rile ramema, le bana ba se chaba, sa LGB.
ATQI plus.
Yonata ba eh.
Thank you. Eh, hara hola, hansaro hola tri. Hebana huli, di thodi, di, di fapan.
As we grow up, we see so many differences.
Manyalo ngana, asex, marriage, serifuma na, o, bomme banyalana, le bomme baba ng, kapu bu nta te banyalana, le bu nta te baba ng.
Eh, we see men marrying other men, the same with women marrying other women.
Ki bu bo na ba juan lo ba tuwa di.
Are they like that or what?
Neroko pa, parliament, please assist us so that we can go back to the communities, maybe in a, in, in quarterly to give back information on the marriage bill.
Ra ko pa, parliament, eritusea ho re, renneres chabing, lae kabaka kotarre ho re, onne hutsoletaba ena ya mananle manyalo.
That is why we founded Befitin that we should invite religious leaders today.
Ke ka ho re len rabona, eletsanelo ho re, rememe, baitapele, basidumedi, orba beti kwa nokajen.
Obani, ba tuha ba kena, gama nonza le nyalo, bayadi kereke.
Because when people enter the marriage, they, they normally do that in the, in their churches.
Juale, kala bo wa, halit le mona na, strekenza machabing, hutlo refa wora na, eh, amenduwa joan billi, lady input isabona kaofen.
We are grateful that you came here to the community of Machabing so that you can be able to inform us as to how the bill is amended.
So we hope that, that marriage council will take place. Horoska wa balidi divorce, before ba tu banyalana, hutaloi in the marriage council, ba councili billi ba kena le nyalo.
There must be marriage couns, counseling conducted to people before they can enter into their marriage so that by the time when they enter their marriages, they are well informed.
Kyale bo.
Thank you. Greetings.
Kyale bohalen na ho rebeka, ki eme mona ta tindakajeno.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Ki amasa ba kense na, ki le nta te, le bohan si tisho.
My name is Lebohang Sidisho. I am from Nala municipality representing.
Fraternal ministers.
Fraternal ministers. There are certain sections of the bill that I support and there are also some sections of this bill that I do not agree with. For us as pastors, because we are also marriage officers, then I do believe that we are also included in this bill. In most cases, when people enter into marriage, their marriage must be registered. And most of them, when they enter into marriage, they first start by going to us in the churches. Now, when it comes to this same-sex marriages. I don't agree with that as I am a man who is guided by the word of God. The word of God doesn't allow me to conduct the same-sex marriage. So I do not agree with that part of the bill. The second point is about the age restrictions of people who are entering into marriage. We must see it with a different eye. My view is that the people who enter marriage must be those who are above twenty years of age at least. Because my understanding is that if a person enters into marriage at the age of eighteen, they are still young to understand the details of a marriage. Once they are above twenty years, they are now a little bit matured and they can focus much better when they enter the marriages. The other one is the polygamous marriage. It's one other part of the bill that I do not agree with. Even though we are used to it because it is happening a lot in our country. My understanding is that Adam was given only one partner. In order to spend the whole life with her. Even the word of God doesn't allow polygamy as the word of God says that two people will meet and they will become one flesh. When it is a lot of them, it becomes a situation where it is no longer a marriage. According to my understanding and my religion. My understanding is that in that situation, it is now called adultery. One other thing that I would like to get clarity from is pertaining to these foreign nationals who come here and they marry our sisters. We would like parliament and the president to pay a closer attention there because some of our sisters, they lose their ID documents. Only to find that at a later stage, they will find out that they are married to somebody that they do not know, that they never met. We would like our government also to support us and guide us as marriage officers and provide some training so that we as marriage officers, we know exactly, we are well informed as to what are we supposed to do when we have to conduct a marriage that is of a foreign national and a citizen. Another issue is this of cohabitation. I also do not agree with the situation where people will cohabit and at a later stage, it is termed as a marriage. Because marriage is created by God and it must be respected. Thank you.
Let me thank you for the opportunity. My name is. I come from Alan Rich, Nyakalung. I'm standing in for ANC and ECWP. I'm going to agree with this marriage bill. Because it's been there that since the beginning, there has been polygamy. Now parliament is dealing with the issues of rights today. Back in the day, it was agreed that when a man would get in for his brother when his brother passes on. So I was asking that when people have been cohabiting for six months. So we should be looked into because sometimes people are just staying with each other because of money. The man stays with the woman because of her money or the woman stays with the man because of his money. This issue must be looked into because sometimes we get married with a ring and we get married with a community of property even though our families do not know. Because when it comes to the traditional marriages, there are agreements between families that when the other family wants their child, there will be a letter written to say, "You should go look for your child from this family because they have her." One of the challenges that we have is that with the ring marriages, the court marriages, when there is a divorce, then the woman can get half of the man's stuff. But then when it comes to the traditional marriages, then the courts will need a lot of. The help is that with the ring marriages, the court marriages, when there is a divorce, then the woman can get half of the man's stuff. But then when it comes to the traditional marriages, then the courts will need a lot of. We should also look into the foreign marriages or marriages for the foreign nationals because sometimes it's not even about love, it's because they want to enjoy the rights of South Africans. So it has to be looked into. We ask parliament to look into that so that at least we can know if the marriage is legit or it's just that the foreign national wants to get the rights and enjoy the rights of South Africans. We should also look into the property issue because sometimes we should look who is wrong We should also look into the property issue because sometimes we should look who is wrong because sometimes when you get to the courts, it's different. But then with marriages, it's only the issue that is dealt by the families and then the court doesn't want to get involved when it comes to our traditional marriages. We are also asking that we have training or we have training and workshops from the marriage counsellors and the officials and the priests or pastors so that we can at least know what we get ourselves into when we get into marriages. We can at least get to know the consequences of marriage, not just get into it because of love or other things. Thank you very much. I greet the parliament officials. Greetings to all the religious leaders that are here. The community of Lijuli Puzwa. In the name of Christ. My name is David Nyama. I'm a doctor of philosophy. I'm also a marriage officer. I was there at the public participation on Thursday. There were no people from Home Affairs there. I don't know if they were invited or they just didn't come. In that participation from Thursday. There were no religious leaders. I think it was just four of us, two men and two women. But the representatives that were there. They said they've been here for ten days. They've met with the stakeholders. We don't know which ones because they were not there on Thursday. Even here, those stakeholders are not here. But I do believe that you will look into that next time.
This whole thing, marriage is so confusing. So confusing because it seems as if the government on this department of Home Affairs, they just want to please everybody. Because when coming to the marriages, pastors have already explained it here. The marriage has been instituted by God. But when coming to the marriage and wanted to please everybody in the marriages. It's not gonna work. I'm a pastor. I know these things. I'm a marriage counselor. It is not gonna work. We are going to fail as we are already failing.
Haidlo sebeza ta wena na kimuruti, kimu counselor waza manyaloo, ki hatziva ta watzina, haidlo sebeza.
But nevertheless.
Impa he laha holi jualu.
We we appreciate the government sending you here so that we can have a chat.
Anana la tabore eh muso lo remetu kwana, hore belipuisa.
We appreciate that.
Ya amelasi.
Now, I don't know how this department is intending to work eh this whole thing out.
Haki seba wana ebim eh, le fa palanale shibilo olatla sebeza nleta wena jua.
Because according to my observation.
Obani, olatela katsileki wana ditawa kati.
The home eh homafes department must come with a strategy.
Le fa palatala hai le swansi litleleliya, litlakalia.
To train so many marriage officers as far as this list is concerned.
Ho kweita isah eh, balsanka ba tama nyalo, olatela eh, letata malena likwa.
As the church, we are now struggling.
Me wela galeki reki reasoku.
Pastors can't get eh marriage eh licenses.
Baruti haba fum, haba fumbanzidi license za za tama nyalo.
Because it's so difficult for them to go through that small manual you are handing out.
Obani, hoba tla holi buima, hore ba ba bale eh manualu unu ulofananka o.
Now, now because of that, pastors are struggling, we are very few marriage officers.
Mehe kalabakale, baruti ba asoku, la regi, officer akapa, eh diwsi rete fokolanza tama nyalo.
Now, this list, this whole list eh of different types of marriages is going to need pastors or other officials who gonna officiate over this eh marriages.
Wela lenani lena lele, litlele lena lele muzi mona, litlo tloka baruti baba nga, ta hore bateba, balsapanza manyaluana.
Because as for me.
Obani, nna?
As a pastor.
Yolo kama roti?
As a Christian.
Yolo kama creste?
I'm not gonna marry all those types of marriages.
Haki klo tla ki nyala mi futya yu yu liya manyalu.
Now, on that very same breath.
Mehe kakatsile swana?
I also wanted to know, how am I going to be protected? Because our government is just eh vo vo volumed on the other people's rights as if others don't have rights.
Wela, na kitlo sebele zojua, obani, wela muso kawo shabani, ditukelo za bato baban, yolo kaka kare, na ha kina dituke.
Now, it's something that we need to learn to on as marriage officers.
Wela, kintoka tloka, nta kisi zu eh, hoi ona yolo kabalsanka.
Gonna refuse.
Obani, hore haki haana, obani kitlo haana.
To marry other types of marriages.
Honyadi sa mi futya eh me nyama nyalo.
I, as a citizen, going to be protected.
Wela, na kalo kalo kama, ha kitlo sebele zojua.
Now, eh I I just want to end up my speech or my presentation.
Ki bata ho, ho pataki sa ta wena ka?
As of now.
Hona jualu.
The marriage register and the marriage certificate.
Marriage register, le marriage certificate?
Is talking about eh husband and wife.
Ibua kamusadi le mona.
In other words, it's he and she.
Kimona, kimusadi.
Now, on this same-sex marriages, I don't know how are you going to to call it as.
Me jala hotse na za eh, manyalu abo ngbo le bo, haki seba na ngai bitza, nta wani.
Because in English, it's she or he.
Obani, kaso hua ki she li he.
No, no, I don't know, when coming to the same-sex marriages, are you already ready the or? Are you already there to can say it or what? Because he and she are get, he and he are getting married.
Wela, haka tla ta wenzetsa manyalu, hai le mona, le mona, hara zebela, retlo i bitza, obani, wela ki mona, le mona, ba nyalana, ri bitza, hai le jualu.
So, that's how far I can go.
Wela he kitla, kitla bahakana?
Thank you very much, and we appreciate you coming, as I said. Eh, basompehang, ki yadume disa?
Honorable members, greetings to you all.
Libitola kaki smanga, lakisa.
I am smanga lakisa.
Kimuruti, ki emete pastors praying together forum.
I'm a pastor, I'm representing the forum of pastor praying together.
Ki du melaha hulu, homudimu.
I believe in God.
Le hori kereke, kile tualo, lasichaba.
Even the church is the one which is guiding us.
Ke na lebo tata bahori.
I do have this problem.
Haiba lenyalo linzi tomatohun amudimu.
If the hand is now out of the hands of God.
If marriage has been taken out of the hand of God, kamanzoma. Le hori mudimu kie, na ya itzen lenyalo, it's a holy institution.
Hape lintatemudimu kene, arilen lenyalo, ki eh, kintoe sonolu fetzing.
Ki kupaparlamente eh shompehang.
I am requesting the honorable parliament.
Renne tifale tuhoro na, ke hobani in lenyalo linzi tomatohun among alone.
I want the honorable parliament to tell us or to ensure why the 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 marriage is now taken out of the hands of the Lord.
Renalebo tata kaba kalahobani.
We do have the problem because of.
Kereke ki one ipilang lebata bana.
The church is the one which where people are living within.
Kereke ikena laboralu lisonda.
We are attending the church on Wednesday and on Sunday.
Reyeta mazapa, ose ahurilitualo labatuliasaka.
We are trying all our best to make sure that the people, they keep on living God or the church.
Parlamente ona itlahangu fela.
Parliament comes only once.
Irifamilao, yo risa zibinghanluri, inali mudimu kahari kapache.
And give us the laws that we don't know whether they do have the guidance of God within them.
Bible eh elin best information before life ends.
Bebele eh elin, yo na tsedimusetu, eh, enali tsedimusetu, engata harabu pilo.
El salusa urilenyalo, le shompe kharabatu kaufaye.
It explains that marriage have to be respected among all the people.
Le hori batu batu ikarabe la, orna bati tijua lenyalo.
And people, they will have to answer to say, how did they live within the marriage?
Ne ku ko pa parlamente, kene heleschavasena samudi.
I am pleading that parliament must have mercy on this nation of God.
Baske baba fa, nteka inkimatla, ditukelo, batezintungulunge batebata.
They mustn't give them the rights to do, or the rights or power to do anyhow.
Obani, habashwa, balu ikarabe la bulamudi.
Because when they die one day, they'll have to answer before the Lord.
Ki ku pa parlamente, skaya ntsake.
Relation between eh parliament and the church.
Obani, mudimu wize, rapelle bose, babi ilu ngbo hul.
We have to pray for everyone.
Arisa le rapelle, le matading, le keke la bali wushali, le tava le wushanya, hali zamilao.
If we don't pray for you, you won't have that wisdom, you'll end up having that kind of madness.
Obani, Bible eh itse wushali ngbo na, baleka nte eka, atiki wusha.
The Bible said, within that wi wi wisdom, it made as if they are clever, but that looked like madness, or it is madness.
Ki akupa se parlamente havani?
I am requesting honorable parliament.
Matualo abatubana, hali ati.
You know what is within?
You do not know the conscience of these people.
Hali zibi matualo abatu.
Only God knows.
Kimudimu fela oi zing, buteng baruna.
Me matualo aruna.
In our inner conscience.
Our atuswa inkimoya wala lela.
Atuswa, which are helped and guided by the Holy Spirit.
Ki ona tlo ngurelaki se, orna lu kela, regenile nyalo, ngatela ifi.
That is what is going to guide us on how are we going to interact within our marriages.
Ki za mshalawa keteela?
I'm doing the last example.
Yasompehang.
Honorable members.
Yasompehang, buya tapili, bushangu ki mudimu.
The leadership is eh created by the Lord.
Me hawalu kela, rubeli disorder.
The ma, awatswanela, horu, hutshwaketsila, kotsa hutshwaketsama iso, mu ketapili.
Muso, ukena karama la palebana, meka jenu bana barishula.
The government got in in between our families, and now our kids are doing as they please these days.
Ki wulela niti papa?
I am telling you the honest truth.
Hali kenali nyalo, jali ki spikere sa keteela.
When now you are intervi interfering now in the marriages, this is now the last nail on the coffin.
We are busy provoking the fears of God.
Geitzena ya nummo, hatong elungu, inele karulu, eneng inlaulu, kotsa itzama iso, eki bu mudimu.
And we supposed to pray for you guys?
Retswanete, re rile rapelle.
Or the hand of God should remain upon you.
Hore lechohola nta te mudimu, lidule, le limu khudimkhala na.
So that the very same bestowal of the hand of God upon you.
Le chohola, la mudimu, lele baylu, mu khudimkhala na.
Should help you to make laws.
Lele tushe, khudira milao.
That are not in conflict with God.
Iskanami la welungu, ithulana le mudimu.
Realirata parlamentia runa.
We love you very much, our parliament.
Yalidume disa bose.
Greetings, everyone.
Eh, kalibisole ba tala maranajeso.
With the mighty name of Jesus Christ.
Ya yeme mona.
Who is speaking now?
Ki selomuloi.
Ki nta te selomuloi.
Olatela the pastors praying together forum.
According to the pastor praying together forum.
Um, ki yeme mona lena, ki le muruti.
I am here standing as the religious leader.
Ki nyadi sa, kereke.
I am the eh marriage counselor.
And then?
Marriage official.
No, I'm a marriage official, ki nyadi sa kereke.
Ki nta te muruti anyadi sa.
Kereke.
Kereke, ki nta te muruti bana. Naba nyadi sa.
Jali, agis na license, jualu, ki baromela homafes.
With with, if I do not have the license, I send them now to homafes?
So, balo toladi marriage certificate.
Hore bateba, hona, kuka ya the certificate, sen tama nyalo.
Nteba bonsa wafela or banyalani.
As eh the evidence to say that they are married.
Ditabate, batezumo ditzeba.
But they the in, the contents of what they supposed to know.
Hore bata mileba cancel obi.
They have to be canceled before the marriage.
Bateben, tcheba kenanga haro yo.
They have to know exactly what are they going to encounter within the marriage.
Wela ki yeme mona ki le muruti.
As the pastor.
Ki salosa hori, ki hasano, letaba ya hori, nganiadi sa, bato babo ngbo tshana.
I am standing here as the pastor against that notion of marrying two people with the same sex or the same-sex marriage.
Ngahatisa ndwe sebu eki baruti baba.
I can now reiterate on what the other pastors have already said.
Obani, repela kale ntsi.
Because we are living with the word of God.
Wala, ha voice za runa dis dilimiya ni.
If our voices are not audible enough.
Then wulela hori entwe tarashula.
That means we going to lose the war.
Hape ki emete muso wa mudimu.
I am also representing the 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 kingdom of God.
Wela sechavasena za runa sena.
Our, our community.
Le haditlala dilite, ntezana kaufela dilite.
Even though there are all these kinds of challenges that we are facing.
Impa mudimu tla bi.
But God always come first.
Obani, God is a provider.
Because he is the provider, kie na mutwa ilunguruwa, shokomela.
Wela ta ba yo hulu etempan perimonaki ya marriage bill.
The main issue here on this paper, it is marriage bill.
Wala shokomedisa ba etapile, baka pa parlamente.
We are questioning you, the honorable members of parliament.
Yolo kamuruti tlaki sa sa salusitze, hori.
As eh pastor drakis, I have already alluded.
Skansang, skankang eh, I mean, skato san lenyalo homudimu.
We mustn't take away that element of God from marriage.
Ta ba yuki poza ngape, yo na kia hori na, motuiana atlaka idea ya utisa marriage bill.
The main question that I have is that the person who brought this idea of the marriage bill.
Kahara panele ya parlamente.
In, within this parliamentary panel.
Naola revisita Bible na.
Have he revisited the Bible self?
Kapaki muruti na.
Or is he the religious leader or the pastor?
Obani, lenyalo kintoya mudimu.
Because God, it's a, it's.
The marriage?
The marriage is something that comes from God.
Wala, haile ntewa mudimu jualu.
So, as it is something that is coming from the Lord.
Banabamudi.
Let it be handled by the pastors or the people who are working under this.
Wala, hara kara, ra tuswa ki muso hori, osakisha dinto, ze bamboo debe, or bato bawele sibing.
If we can be assist assisted by the government by bringing things that will help the people not to fall or to to falter.
Now, el salusa, retlo bale sechavase bulu keile.
That means we are going to have the community which is protected by the Lord.
Seki gensaslo shelleza, nteina eki ona mona, engata kuslo shelleza, eh, ta ba ya hori bato babo, ngbo le bo, baho no, or banyalani.
What I have noticed in this bill is something that is encouraging that, that is encouraging the self, eh the the same-sex marriage.
Wala, hara bata or mudimu, ah, halefela sechavasena samudi.
If we want the the wrath of the Lord to come upon us.
Retlo du melaha hori, buye mobo, buye zahale.
We will let that situation to happen.
Ebba baruti bata hadela, baba baketilezi base bato ayero, bakuale.
The eh, at the end of the day, the the pastors will end up being suppressed, then they end up being arrested.
That, nteki salusa ya hori, retlamile, oru counselor bato.
The issue that.
Before baka nyalana, reza, counseling before bato banyalana.
The issue that I'm trying to reiterate is that we are doing the marriage counseling before the marriage.
Wala, hukro babi ma, ona hori, ngakcancer, abonta te baba bi, di badit, di badit simona ilo re baba nyala.
It's going to be very problematic to cancel two males or two people from the very same eh sex.
Kapabome baba bedi, badit simona baba, baba ko pana nyala.
Or the same applies with two women who wants to get married.
Obani, ntewa pili, kitlamile ki barrapelle.
Because the first step is to pray for them.
Wala, hamudimu, afuma na hori, kesa ta ba, eka, eh, hasano lien.
When the Lord realized that now I am going against his will or wishes.
Then hona thonono fatze, bato abatre.
Blessings that will come out of that.
Wala, lenyalo kitthonono fatze ya mudimu.
The marriage is eh something that is holy and blessed by the Lord.
Wala, riadume la hori, ta ba yena na bato bae sum, ya hori bomme, Bible eh saisifela hori, bomme, bata ko pa, bomme baba shanu, bata ko pa hori, bade, fanyanta tiyali mu.
In the Bible, it explains and stipulates that there will be five women who will hang under the wing of one man.
Wala, bato ko pa, ho ba fanyamuna.
They will request to be under the same name of the man.
Eh sing me anyale, bonta te baba ngaata.
Not this polyandry thing that we see happening.
Weyakalinzula mudimu, isaha ele bushanya, masongamudi.
This looks like eh madness in in front of the, in front of the eyes of the Lord.
Wala, realibu abatuba esungu, oru bu futza, naboska baruela.
We, we are thankful, but for that we have, we mustn't eh get the the poverty to be, to befall us.
Wala, resho kahori, eh, re, rest something, seum. Juale, resho kahori, reshoping seumudimu asikisitze, mapelon arona.
We have to respect what the Lord has brought upon our lives.
Untweka hotale tswanke, ke muso waronakapa parliamente.
What could be encouraged by our government or parliament?
Hori, ba, batu baba tangu nyalana.
Is that people who want to get married.
Banyalane katlasa umbrella yamudimu.
They have to get married under the umbrella of the Lord.
So that batse bo basifte.
So that they can be safe.
Kahase kikatela kibuya mansuyana.
Rounding up, I would like to say.
Hori kia kopa.
I am requesting.
Kilemuruji.
As the pastor.
Kile rappela lelona.
Praying for you to.
Okaleske bela ferekana molilindi.
So that you mustn't get lost along the way.
Oske hatkishwadin totsi banhasano limudimu.
We mustn't bring things that will be against the Lord.
Hariba, ndituautiswa ntwezshhasano limudimu.
Bringing the things that are against the Lord.
Eblela ose chabasena siti eti.
That means our community, our nation is now at something that is not going to come right with them.
Kahona kialebu.
Thank you very much.
Okay, just sorry, there's an announcement that's saying there's a person who forgot the KP Tech account in one of the shops there. She or he can approach our mother there at the back if you've forgotten something in the shop. Thank you.
Kui mora, yer barra ledha fano sregeren.
I greet you all parliamentary members, honorable parliamentary members.
Bahi danki pri vorag omite kanstaa vamore.
Thank you for the privilege of standing here and addressing you today.
I'm pastor Andre Kruger from EPK Kerke Bewegung.
He's pastor Andre Kruger from the EPV Church.
EPK.
EPK Church.
The inasten wat mayrharag pla oru wettgeving wat ons to pass, it like so of ons, the mensen wil slave maak in ele van ele vrijheid beruf.
The only problem I actually have with this bill is that it seems to want to make slaves of people and people have to just follow what is said in there.
Wano osna di woort van God kaike, nos kan beginbe di skiping van Genesis 1 verse 26 tot be 28.
If we look at the Bible and we look at Genesis 1 to verse 28, when God created the world.
Daad God aidruklik gesai, twe geslachte geskapen, man ene frau, da is ni anna geslachte wat geskapen is, so wat no opi lapo kom di es da ni.
In that particular section, God said that he created two sexes, man and woman, and nothing else in between.
Dat like so of ons, die klei, free potterbaker wil voorskrif, wat hij moet doen.
It seems as though we want to prescribe to our maker what he should do and accept.
Genesis 3 verse 16 vertel os aidruklik, la di man, oru frau zalheersen, ze zal man anhang, en ni, da wordt die gepraat van mans en frauens ni, lepraat van ien tut ien.
If you look at Genesis 3, verse 1 to 16.
16, 9 verse 16.
Oh, just verse 16, sorry, where it typically states in the Bible that God created man to be the one to look after his wife, and that the two of them would leave to each other. It doesn't say anything about similar sexes or the same sexes.
Dat is wat is a probleme, in die verleden of ons homas, altijd om terug te verwijst naar die verleden toe, so ek mag het ook zeker mag noem, in die verleden heet ons regerings die kerke geraadpleeg volgens Godse woord, om in Godse woord te blij, om te kijk wat die rugline in verband met Godse woord.
I'm sure I can mention the past because everybody else does. In the past, our government actually spoke to religious leaders and especially looked at the Bible because in the way they directed the country, they wanted to make sure that it was in line with what was stated in the Bible.
Dat lijkt net voor mij zo of die gescrewe woord van ons kepper nie meer een agneum wordt ni, want da is dinge in Godse woord wat ons als mens nie kan verander ni, dus vastgesteld, en dit die inderdaad is die hiweleke.
It kind of seems that we want to change what is, what God's word is in the Bible as it is written, because especially if you look at marriages, how marriages are set out in the Bible, and it seems as though we want to change that.
Als is net na ien wet wat nog nie deel is van die wettgeving ni is, als is kijk na die ongedisciplineertijd van die kyners van vandaag, en die ongoorzaamheid is het onmedare wet weggevat was wat in die Bible gescrewe ge was voor ons, tigtig die een wat je liefheid, maar dat is weggevat, en dat is zo kom ons land in die chaos is wat ons nou is.
If we just want to move a little bit away from this specific act and speak about a different act, and this act is basically the children's act, where the children are given certain rights, you can't punish your child if your child does wrong anymore, and it is stated in the Bible that you are supposed to do this to make sure that they keep on the right road, and it seems since this has been taken away, how children do not listen to us and they are undisciplined.
Dat seenek anisalaf vorstellen met ons hiweliks wet, wat nog een plasvan dat ons wil, ons herit alres togelaten, die salage slachte mag trouw en hiweleke kom en so on, maar dat is nie wat die groot probleme is, die gaan oor die hoeveelheid frauens wat ons nou wil toelaat om met de man te trouw, en op die inderdaad van wie is die mensen wat skade lei? Dat is die kyners.
If we look at this act, if we speak about our civil unions, I mean that is an act that has been approved already, which means that same sexes can get married to each other, I mean it is part of our laws already, but where I have a little bit of an issue is when it comes to polyandry, that is a woman who can have more than one husband. What will be, what will the effect be on the children that comes from this type of unions?
Dat is zo kom ons baai kyners zien op die straten, ek werk in die straten, en ek seen baai kyners wat onder boxen en korantpapiere slaap, wat nie en ek weet wat is, wat is nie geld in die hees ni, ons is nie so Solomon, Solomon van die Bible wat 700 frauens gehad het, ni, ons het nie sa rikdom ni, dus zo kom, hoe kan ons dan veronderstelwezen om meer is een vrouw te, ons het nie daireikdom ni.
If we look at what is happening today, especially amongst the children, I work on the streets, I see many children who live on the streets, who sleep on the streets, and I think that this is part of the problems that we're having if we look at this type of act that we're talking about. I understand that Solomon had something like 700 wives, but he had the riches to have that. Many of us don't, so having more than one wife could be problematic, especially if it comes to looking after the children.
So ek seena groot probleme om daar, ons weet ons is verskund kultiere en ons is verskunde tradities, dit anvarik en ek verstaan het, maar ek denk ons bedaan en kijk, voor die kyners ondalwe wat geboren wordt uit haar hiwelekeit, want verseker daar die kyners beland in die moeilijkheid in of de annetijd in ele lewe, en ele is op die straat, en die regering, ons angestelde regering zit met een groot probleme op de hande, so wat is nou kan seen, hoeveel geld gaan uit om voor die mensen te seen wat kyners heet, wat nie manse heet, wat die manse geloos heet.
I understand that we have different religions and different cultures, but what we've got to look at here is what the effect will be on the children, because we already have a problem where people depend on the state to provide for their children. So what we should be looking at is how this hold, whether we are from different cultures or religions, how we're going to work together to relieve this burden of the state, because it's not only the state's burden.
So ek seen me die vorgestelde wet over die hiweleke, ek seena groot probleme wat gaan voor ons in die toekomst hard, hard in die aks ketter gaan bijt.
So I see in this new bill that we will most probably end up with problems later that is going to come back and bite us.
Ek denk ons moet raarag teruggaan naar Godse woord toe, want ons simons 80% volgens die census in Zuid-Afrika is ons christende, is dit nie tijd dat ons terug beweegt naar Godse woord toe, en zij rugline volg verhiweleke ni, waarom wil die, waarom me die erel ek respecteer ons regering, maar waarom wil die regering interferen me die wil van God?
Yes. If we look at the bill and we see what is proposed over here, then I have a problem, especially when it comes to the religious side. Why are we moving away from the word of God or what the prescripts of God are for us, especially when it comes to marriages? Because I can see that this can lead to many more problems. What we should do is follow the prescripts of God that is stated in the Bible, and that will most probably make sure that we don't sit with all these challenges that we have at the moment.
En dan gaan ons weer terug, gaan ons weer voor into Godse woord wat ons kan zien in gruntiers, ons kan het zien in ies ekeel, ons kan het zien in de moetes, ons is nie gelijk ni, een man en een vrouw is nie gelijk ni, een vrouw val onder die manse gezag, en dit staan al klaar in Genesis 3 verse 16, en ons kan het zien, ons kan nie die wet, die traditie van Godse woord verander om ons man en vrouw gelijk te stellen ni, die man is angesteld als die hoofd van die hees, nie die vrouw ni, en ons kan nie die vrouw die magje wat die man het nie, en dat is waar ons gaan baai pakslakere om gelijkheid te brengen tussen man en vrouw, en ons gaan zwarker in die toekomst daadier.
We can see in different sections in the Bible, in Genesis, Ezekiel, Timothy.
Timothys.
And what we can see there is that in God's word, God does not say that men and women are equal. The man is there to look after and protect the wife, and I think if we start changing this and moving away from this, this is going to cause more problems than advantages for us.
Maar ek wil net voor die regering say baai danki voor wat elle doen, ons het alle mandaten, ons het alle mandaten ge om ons te lei, ek wil net vran laat elle in alle mandat ook toelaat, laat God hiles zal lei volgens die voorschrifte wat af ons gees, iwe en iwe terugal, en ek het is geselsmetela. Danki.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to get me to speak to you. I have already handed in my speech over there in which I state everything. I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and also that when you deliberate about this, that you keep God's word in mind, and I thank you.
Khutso. Kalibizo ke molashayirampai.
The name is Molashayirampai.
Ke mungodi wa wati, wa komidiya wati, office niyala counselora wa twenti, kuwa no.
I'm the secretary in the. Wat twenti.
Hapeki se tosa muhasawaba ai len Sanco.
I'm also a member of Sanco.
Eh, 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 shidinkatekada se dibuile, akeseven ndatemal keta mita advocate wa na kizi bili bizo laha.
A lot of these things have already been mentioned by the advocate.
Eh, but before kida di tabenzin, une kerefela kere, lefatsi kela jehofa, lezo shetze holon.
Before coming to that, I just want to mention that the earth and everything that belongs to it belongs to God.
Yes, and the Bible also instructs us that we should love one another, love our neighbors, love our enemies, and pray for them.
Bibile erablela hape lo re, retlamea hori, lerelata, rerata ne, rerate ba ai sanibarona, rerate lidi rata roona, rebela rappela ne. Juale, kine kerefela reskerase bedisa bibile, o spreada le shoyo, en pa hakimu.
I just want to mention that you must not use the Bible in order to spread hatred.
Eh, kine kerehe batwadi, advocate ubiledi, runare, re nakere, we support the bill, provide it.
Ketshe sa bibile, haiba.
Haiba, eka lukiswadin katele tze lung advocate udi reese te kaofela, all those chapters the advocate abulen lezo na hori, redishe bedisise, hori reskerai pmana kala refalile muso kale sabate kapu kala khasanule mala otewa lefatsi.
If all those issues that were raised by the advocate are rectified, we will support the bill.
Eh, hake kuala. Eh, kine kerefela, hara reskerase bedisa bibile, o, oso uwe zale shoyo, obane.
Yes.
Sorry. Dilafasen, just give time, give extra time here. Amama, you can sit down, I can sit down, I'm the chair of the committee, you can sit down. Let me just assist us so that we manage this meeting with decorum and respect, and I said it earlier on. We have conducted a public hearing in six provinces so far. And we conducted to all stakeholders. And all the time when we do that, we say this is your meeting, because we don't have a decision on whatever things that are happening. And the issues which are raised here, we'll respond later in terms of the standing of the, because some of the things that you are raising are within the conframe of the constitutions are correct, some of them are not correct, and you have not seen one of our members here raising a hand to object or to do that. You have not seen us, we're just sitting, listening. Even the things that you say, which I can interpret as hatred to me, I've not raised my hand. But because you are raising, you are disrupting your own meeting, we have a responsibility now to stand and assist you. So let me give you an example. In northwest, in Mafiki. And I want to take 10 minutes just to make sure that you understand where we are. In Mafiki, there was a pastor who stood up. On the podium. I can't record, but I have my notes here, so you have many books here, so I'll just revisit my notes. And that pastor said, you are facilitating a marriage. And that pastor said, you are, you are facilitating a marriage bill, an important subject. And you are younger and you don't have a ring. You see, I don't have a ring, you can see that. So unfortunately, that pastor, when he was talking, he himself didn't have a ring. So he didn't wear a ring. So we allowed him to talk. If you can see, most of us here don't have a ring, so you don't even know. And I, I like what one pastor said here, are we, people are sitting here, we don't know their soul, I think that my, the quotation I'm getting correctly. It's correct. We don't know, we are solely, we don't know your conscience, your status in society, your gender question, so we don't know. But we understand that we have a responsibility to respect each other. So because I, I, I able to talk to elders and the, the young, because I'm very young, you can see we're young here, and you're almost respecting you. So there was a chief, but the chief, ma? Chief of Mafiki, eh, yeah, Chief Barolo. Yeah, no, no? Yeah, Chief Silek, yeah, so in terms of hierarchy in the meeting, he was an elder, was high, so what do you say to him? When we responded later, we said, no, chief, we request to pass a message through you to the pastor, because we can't talk to him directly, so, because when you're an elder, pass to him, so we explain ourselves to it, to the, to the chief. That because you are, eh, were remote, Ma Bungahau, and you are in most respected authority, we can see that one of your, eh, yeah, one of your subjects, whether he's old or younger, he's misbehaving. And he doesn't know the status of members of parliament and those that are in the meeting. So I want to explain to you, the chief, that, tell him that at the time he was on the podium. And says, no, you're fast in a meeting, you do not have a ring. Tell him, even himself, he didn't wear a ring. I don't have a ring, of course. I don't know what is the status of marriage. I don't know. So I said to the chief, tell him that, eh, I'm 15 years in marriage myself. If you go home affairs, you find my status. I have three kids. So you can, my status. I have three kids. So you can, because we could not stand and respond to you. Um, so I'm trying to make sure that, I'm sure you understand where I'm, I'm going, because you may think that insulting another community or section of society, the person you're sitting next to, at home, is not, is a different status, so we have a responsibility as the committee to make sure that the constitution of the republic recognizes all of us. So you don't have a, eh, a right, I don't have a right to insult the authority of the pastor who stands here, or a religion, or a traditional authority, or any other person who doesn't believe in Christianity or traditional or cultural. So I don't have that right. The only right I have, it to respect the status of an individual within the confinement of the constitution. So I want to end like this, that. Eh, you, you, you acted outside the ambit of the constitution. Or you, you acted on the connotations of hatred. So you can see, we don't want those ones, eh, in the manner you raise it. It's not those ones. It's not those ones. You see, my sister is an albino, my sister. So if she was here. And somebody says, no, these albinos, you don't want them, they're not people, whatever, 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 will keep quiet, but we have a responsibility to protect their rights because they have constitution. It's not about, says my sister, no, but you have, so you don't come here and want to, and say, we can't talk to you, can, we can tell you now that your behavior is inhuman. Can't tell us, people do this, disrupt people in, in this meeting, it's wrong, members, absolutely wrong. So nobody knew that my sister is an albino, even members of parliament, they don't know, the first time they hear about it. And when we're in the meeting, they talk about them, I don't rise, I'm angry, but I rise because we can't tolerate it, that everybody, people must be, eh, eh, isolated. You raise your matter within, with decorum. This is a subject we don't, we don't believe in. This you believe in, so you can't insult people here. And I'm telling you, members, you don't know the person next to you, what is the status beyond, I don't know, Mkhale, eh, his relative or something like that, what is the status? So we must respect each other. So I felt I must rise because otherwise we will think that we are not attentive and listening what you are, you are saying. If you don't believe on a matter, raise it to decorum, within the confine, without insulting, and members of the committee will just leave because, ah, we're here to be insulted and so, and so on. If we take a matter with the religious community, we insult them now, somebody insult the, the traditional authorities, and we keep quiet, it will be wrong. So, sister, I don't think that is, eh, your conduct, eh, eh, we can tolerate it. But I think, and I'm sure all of us here were younger and older. So I thought colleagues must just step off because it may get out of hand and emotions will be higher, and it's not that we don't have emotions, we have, we can be just extreme ways to disrespect, but the trend to manage your meeting so that we are able to, eh, to move, eh, 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 online. So, eh, members, I thought I must just, eh, assert our authority now, that we not allow other sections to be insulted. And I've given my personal example, not another person, my personal example. Because I have a responsibility also through members of committee to facilitate, eh, 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 this meeting. Apologies, eh, my brother, you can proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Eh, in conclusion, can I care if, eh, if the age of consent is 18?
Eh, I could, eh, la dihala, get la refela, haiba, skip, eh, le sadile, moze, eh, say, you know, eh, eh, shumale, eh, eh, rubedi.
Then I, I keep on the post.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yes, eh, if we could, eh, 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 18 years, oh, oh, no, eh, 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 then it means, eh, 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 much short enough, eh, 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 jolly, can I care if, eh, if the age of consent is 18, then we don't have a problem with that. Eh, 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 skip, eh, 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 I thank you.
If a child of 18 years is allowed to go to the bottle store and buy alcohol, it means they are mature enough to can take a decision whether to get into a marriage or not.
Do melam, eh, 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 eh,
The name is Elisa Masoko, from what?
Fifteen.
Wat'fifteen in Tabo.
Kili wat'komiti.
I'm a man, a member of what committee?
Eh, 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 eh,
Eh, from what has been said by those who came before me, I would like to speak about the issue of, eh, a situation of, eh, marriage in community of property where each partner gets 50%, I support that one.
Eh, 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 eh,
I also support the issue of the pastors, that those who are officiating on marriages are supposed to be trained or educated on how to conduct these marriages.
Eh, 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 eh,
What I cannot support is a child of 18 years that they can get into marriage because they are still young, they are still supposed to be at school. Thank you.
Eh, okay, so we will take another set of 10 hands again. Eh, I'll check back on this side. One, you can, when I point you, you can come in front, one, two, ma, three, four, five. So there are no other hands on this side, so. Six, seven. So, like, like we said before, if your, the message has been, eh, eh, spoken, you don't need to come and repeat it, we've, we've already. So there are no other hands on this side, so. Six, seven. So, like, like we said before, if your, the message has been, eh, eh, spoken, you don't need to come and repeat it, we've, we've already. Okay, you can come and join, okay, so those are 10, eh, eh, hands that we have, so I think we will proceed in that manner. One hand. No other hand. Okay, you can come in and join, okay, all right, we have, we've got 10 hands now, thanks, we can then proceed.
Eh, do melam, Africa.
Greetings Africans.
Eh, call it, eh, si poma posa.
The name is Si Poma Posa.
Eh, get la, Wat'fifteen, I'm a secretary, Wat'komiti, yeah, Wat'fifteen.
I'm from Wat'fifteen and I'm the secretary of Wat'komiti.
Eh, Kimona, eh, 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 eh,
I support this bill.
Eh, 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 eh,
My main reason is that all of us here, we are humans.
Eh, 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 eh,
I will highlight mainly the chapter two of the constitution that is speaking about the Bill of Rights.
Eh, 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 eh,
Everybody who lives in South Africa has a right and it is the duty of the government to support everybody who is living in South Africa.
Eh, 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 eh,
All of us are from different religions and there are those who do not have any religion at all, but government must be impartial.
Yeah, level.
Thank you.
Eh, Mulweni. Okay, eh, kamalam, go, Nongululo Sifumba, eh, so, eh, eh, Virginia.
Greetings, my name is Nongululo Sifumba, I'm from Virginia.
And now organization, eh, so, eh, eh.
I'm not part of any organization.
Okay, eh, so, eh, eh, eh.
I'm from Wat'nine.
Eh, 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 eh,
I have one plea with regards to the bill, can we please look at the polygamy matter?
Eh, 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 eh,
When it comes to polygamy, it happens that a man will take a wife from the villages and then a man will also take her wife from the urban areas.
Eh, 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 eh,
When there are divorce proceedings, when it comes to the rural wife, there is nothing written that stipulates that they are now divorced when the man takes the urban wife.
Eh, 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 eh,
When the man then marries a woman from the urban areas and then the man dies or passes away?
Eh, 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 because, eh, 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 eh,
When it comes, areas is considered as the main wife, whereas the one from the urban area who is recognized by Homer face is, is now not considered when it comes to assets.
Eh, 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 eh,
I would like, um, the committee to look at that issue because when men divorce, they don't like going to the courts, they don't want to formally divorce that marriage from the rural areas, they recognize the urban one. I would also like to plead that when the law says that our children should get married at the age of eighteen, I do not agree with that because our children are very young for marriage as it is, especially in the times that we live in. Um, when it comes to our children getting married nowadays, they will meet a partner and then maybe the girl will fall pregnant and then the, the, the man or boy will move on to the next partner, they don't stick to the partners that they got pregnant. Like in the olden days, marriages lasted because partners were faithful to one another, which is not the case nowadays. When it comes to the issue of fight and set, I would like to address the fact that um, may, may the committee look at that because men waste women's time when they are in a fight and set situation because they move on to the next woman and they don't marry the one that they've spent maybe ten years with or more. And then the family from the men will also say when you guys are separating that you are not married, you are not legally married anyway, they won't look at your investment and what role you brought into the marriage. When it comes to uh, women who get married, when kids are born out of wedlock, the, the woman who comes into the new marriage, it is important that they acknowledge that there were children before they entered the marriage. So when it comes to assets being given, they must also put themselves in that other woman's shoes and think if it was me, how would I like my child to be treated? Thank you very much.
I'm from Belt Fontaine in Zolo Belli Municipality.
I'm from Victory Empowerment Organization. I will dwell on polygamy. Polygamy does exist. I support men who go for polygamy. Because when we look at the ratio, we found out that females are more than males in numbers. If you want to be against polygamy. Or maybe we are already in polygamy that is not legalized because you'll find that the husband that you have also has uh, somebody. The best thing is to know that my husband is also having another woman somewhere. Thank you. I also support the issue of uh, children or teenagers of eighteen years to enter into marriage. Because according to the nature of work that I am doing, from experience, I know that young girls, as young as thirteen years, they already have their own children. Some of them are getting the, the support grant. Some of us, uh, as parents, we allow our children to cohabit inside our families. When your, your, your child impregnates another child from another family, you go and take that child, you raise it, you allow the parent to go to school. I will end up by saying that I do support polygamy and I also recommend that polygamy be legalized. Greetings to the leadership from parliament. The name is Miekezi Jangimshafu, from Feselsprun, Monya King, Katlasanala. I'm from the Fellowship Pastors. I'm grateful about this bill that we are discussing today. When you open the Word of God, it starts by saying. It is by God's grace that there is parliament. We pray for you on a daily basis that God can uh, expose to you what is happening down here in our communities. I also like the section that is about marriages that we are discussing today. Fortunately for me, God blessed me with the most beautiful woman on earth and we are now married for thirty-four years. I don't have a problem of a child entering a marriage at the age of eighteen or above. One thing that must happen when people enter into marriage is that they must be counseled and guided by their parents and marriage officers. There are old people now who were married at the age of fourteen and their marriages are still existing and strong because they were guided and counseled by their parents. I don't support polygamy. A woman is jealous by nature. They will always be jealous to a situation where they will end up poisoning each other. I don't support the marriage where a woman will be taken and be placed behind the door. That one is tantamount to kidnapping. Because marriage is created by God. We must seek wisdom from God before we enter marriage. And God will guide us accordingly. I would like to tell our leadership from government, from parliament. Most of us who grew up under the guidance of Christianity at our homes and in churches and also at schools, we have a fear of doing terrible things because we are afraid of the wrath of God. Even today, I respect each and every leader according. To how I was raised. Be conscientized and taken back to the Word of God. Because if one fears the Lord, even in secrecy, they will be afraid to do terrible things. I would like to thank leadership from parliament and everybody who is here. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, greetings to our leaders and the community at large. I am councilor in Kosi from Lijuli Putzwa District Municipality. I only have two points. Truth is, the points that we are raising here, we're just saying the same things just differently. First thing, or the first one is the, 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 the age of agreement to marriage. We cannot uh, shy away from the fact that there's a thing called age grooming. Eighteen years is very young for children to get uh, into marriage because of uh, that marriage uh, grooming, that grooming. Because uh, we know that a lot of kids, when they are raised, many older men groom them and then by the time they turn eighteen, they just take them and make them their wives. I'm, I'm appealing to parliament to at least look into the issue of uh, children getting married at eighteen because at eighteen, they are not mature enough, maybe they can take it up to twenty because twenty is better, there's a bit of maturity there. It's not just about marriage, uh, there's also other issues when it comes to this age of eighteen, uh, they can drink, they can have sex and all, but just because, because we're here for the marriage issues, I'll just stick to that, but I'm appealing to parliament to look into that as well. The second part is the issue of lobola. I would like to, uh, parliament to get in, to give us details as to how they got into the fact that uh, they, when there's lobola, then there is marriage because the, uh, the, the conclusion that they came to goes against our beliefs. I refuse that uh, when now lobola has been paid, that is considered community of property or in community of property or marriage in community of property. I do not agree with that. Just as other, the previous speaker spoke, that people get into marriages for different reasons. Just as the previous speaker spoke, that people get into marriages for different reasons. So the fact that now we can say just because there is a letter that has been signed and there's been half of lobola paid, we can now call that marriage in community of property. I do not support that because some people are genuine with this marriage, but then others are just in for something else. So I'm appealing to parliament that it shouldn't just be a letter, but there should be a signed certificate where they indicate if it's marriage in community of property or not. So I know that we are a democratic country, but I still appeal that at least when it comes to the issue of marriages, we should look into the way the people of South Africa live. Maybe as it has been said that we look to God and marriage being ordained by God. So we should just look into that and how South Africans live and not just make decisions. Thank you very much for the opportunity that I'm being given, the opportunity for us to come and give our ideas or, yes, our ideas on this issue of marriage. My name is Motlalipule Tulo from Watnain, Virginia. I'm going to talk about at least three issues. The first one are the rights that two people are given in marriage, a man and a woman. The government says they are given equal rights as men and women? But as I look at it, it looks like women have been given more rights than men. I'm saying this because a woman is allowed or she has a right to can get a man arrested if he wants his responsibilities. And if she says no, and she can now get him arrested. So I feel like this is oppressing men. There's also the issue of abuse where women are being the ones that are maybe protected more than men because you may find out that a lot of men are also abused by women. But then when they go and report it, they are not taken to heart because it's a woman that has done that to him. So that now that makes divorces a skyrocket. So I'd like the government to look into that so that as people of South Africa, we can at least move forward with this issue of marriages and develop at least. The last issue is the age group when it comes to marriage. I believe eighteen is still alright, especially for women. I'm saying this because women get older quicker. Let's say maybe a woman is eighteen years old and then a man is twenty-five years old. I feel like that is okay because as I said, women age more than men or faster than men. Thank you very much. Greetings. The leadership that is here in the community. My name is Kinewe Masuewu. I'm a pastor from a fraternal organization. I'm a traditional healer from the Organization of Age. From Beltfontein, Maspali, Tjolopele Municipality. The issue that I'm here with is to agree with the same-sex marriage. Because that is how things are, that is how the world is. We shouldn't take it according to our beliefs. First of all, we should think about how they feel. Because those are our kids and our brothers and sisters. Tomorrow it can be my child, it can be my family. Now, when I get faced with it as a leader, what am I going to do if I was against it? So I'm saying they should be given enough support, just like everyone else. They are our people who come from the same communities as us. Churches, most of them do not allow them. So where are they supposed to go? So that they can also feel like other citizens, just like we feel. The way I see things is maybe they should have their own teachings that agrees with how they are. They should be allowed to have a church that accepts people of their kind where they will not be abused. Because as a traditional healer, I do accept them. I have them in my tradition as well. I'm saying they should be given a chance. That is where I am. Thank you. I greet you, my leaders and the community, in the name of Jesus. I've heard the conversation about the paper that I'm holding. Now, I have an understanding, holding this paper, that we have the modern days. And then there are times that are coming, the eras that are coming. And then there is that era that has passed. Now, our children are passing through their own era. Not our era. And encourages them to do things that they want to do. I want to talk about this one of a child that is eighteen years. Who has to get into marriage. I agree. I do agree. That that child has to get into marriage. If she concerns that she wants to be married. Because now is that when she is twelve years old and falls pregnant. I am the one now that has to get the burden to go and sign at the hospital. Because she can't sign for herself. But if she's eighteen, she has an ID. She has the right to get married if she wants to. Because if the government says she shouldn't get married. Or the parent says she shouldn't get married. Now, she will go and do cohabiting. And that is her right as well. When I go there and take her out with violence, now I take her to the police station. I don't have a lot. I just want to conclude with this one. I've already said that there are those eras. I think when the president was sending you, he had read the Word of God. In the Book of Isaiah. Chapter four. Chapter four. That says in that era, one woman, seven women, will hold on to one man. Listen. Where women are crying for marriage. Or they want marriage. Or they want to change their last names. The Word of God says, seven women will hold on to one man. And then they search. We don't need anything from you. As long as we can be held by your last name. And not be insulted. And the people are doing things that are not they are running away from being insulted. The Bible says, seven women will hold on is not married, is insulted. Other congregation of healing. In Wapstat. I don't have a husband. He passed on in two thousand. A working pair. Women pastors who are married because they think that I might Bible eating. They will hold on to that man so that he can give them dignity. Thank you very much. Greetings to the leadership. And everyone that has supported us today. My name is Malagato Mamuni. I come from the Lissia program. I have one issue. I've been married to a foreigner for thirteen years and I've been going to legal, but I'm not getting any help. They keep on postponing time every time I go there because I want to be divorced to this foreigner. And now the next time I come, there is a different person who also keeps on postponing.
It really handled differently, sister. Yeah, we have a provincial manager. We dealt with this case yesterday. So PM, we're going to deal with this matter like the one of yesterday. Yeah, so she will proceed, but I suggest that we immediately interact. I know there are many people who have the same problem, but I think we can assist her. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, let me just explain pastor before we will end. Is that in our society, there are many, and we said it yesterday, that there are many young women who have been, our youth, an abusive process of utilizing home affairs for people outside to marry our people in order for them to gain, bargaining? Yeah, citizenship. So in the sixth administration, we tasked home affairs to institute a multidisciplinary team, which they're working now, with other law enforcement agencies to make sure that these fraudulent activities of printing IDs outside, documents, fraudulent marriages, they work against them. And I think so far, there's good work that has been demonstrated. So everywhere where we go, public hearings, these are some of the issues that we get. But I know it's only a matter that she's been encouraged to raise it. And we thought that the PGM, provincial manager, must assist in terms of following up. We are convinced that this person who's unable to come to this, to avail himself is because we assume that to this, to avail himself is because we assume that if the citizenship certificate or something like that. So they are delaying. So what do we do, PM? We must investigate in detail that person. Your team immediately must venture into the names of that person, law enforcement agency, must go and look for him. What you must know is that we must able to trace back where he has applied, who was involved in home affairs, the stages, until we get the point, what is this problem of this citizen? So it assists us to manage to awareness around. So we want to use that study case again. And we're going to follow up PGM on that meeting. We're going to call you in the committee, the director general, on those two issues of the pastor yesterday and also the woman who also has the same problem and also this woman in our next committee, portfolio committee. and also the woman who also has the same problem, and also this woman in our next committee eh portfolio committee. And we encourage all of you, those of those some of those issues, must approach the Home Affairs eh eh department and raise those matters. If you fail to get assistance from Home Affairs, on the website, get into parliament, look for Home Affairs Committee, this secretary, Mr. Matonzi, or any member of the provincial legislature or National Assembly or councillor, go to him or here. Whether it's any political party, if it's a member of provincial legislature, National Assembly or a councillor, go to him or here, I'm not able to get assistance from Home Affairs. Please, I want you to link me with a particular portfolio committee to get my matter. And if it's Home Affairs indicates that you need to be in the, you get the the contact, will come back to the provincial manager of a department or the DG or the minister or the DM, so that this matter is being raised. Thank you, and proceed, pastor.
Eric, ki du medise murias tula ripuisan. Let me greet the chairperson of the proceedings.
Lady member of our committee, Osamalion.
And the member of eh members of 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 the committee.
Kalibizo itumeling.
My name is Itumeling.
Sefani ki Mukoduklo.
The surname is Mukoduklo.
Ki moruti kereken.
I'm a pastor at church.
Ki mossebeletziwa sechava.
I'm a public servant.
Ki sebezah, lese polisa sa Africa boru.
I work with the SAPS.
Class of social crime prevention.
And the social crime prevention.
Me rena lidi different organizations se sebezah neswa.
And we have different other organizations that we work with.
Chairperson ki mona tzasinlena.
Chairperson, I'm here today.
Ka tabayena ya marriage bill.
On the issue of marriage bill.
Mo kesu anten kesu kuchanong wot eighteen.
I come from Kuchanong wot eighteen.
Jolaka membera ya community.
As a member of the community.
Before nineteen ninety-four.
Pele ho nineteen ninety-four.
Renalidi kireketsa renki di frontline churches.
We had churches that are called frontline churches.
Senendinalabohonibautraina barutu ba di marriage officers.
Which had the capability of training pastors to be of marriage officers.
But after the elections on the twenty-seventh of April.
But after the elections of the twenty-seventh of April.
Di kireketsa otsenere ke kireketsa hulu.
Those churches that I'm talking about.
Reboni di membasa di kireke leba tuba community, baba le tukele lewe exercisea, mo baba tangu rapelatin.
We saw the members of the communities and the members of the church having the rights to pray wherever they they wanted or wished.
Me ki mona mo rebone ngohtsa lo adikireketsenyane, sa ba tuba ne mbatswa adikirekenzena tserenke kireketsa hulu.
That is when we saw small churches being formed eh by the members who came from those big churches.
Many of these people by yemba yabadi founders of these new small churches.
Many of the people who became founders of these churches.
Keba to one banale the right qualifications.
There are people who had the right qualifications.
Banale the knowledge of the communities itse oba pelanka roso.
Who had the knowledge of the communities that they lived in.
Me how ba the the social ills itse seban raised within the community.
And when there were social ills that were raised in the community.
Baba lebohoni bora ba touse government deho intervenea, ho solve the problem itse.
They have the capabilities to help the government and intervene to solve those problems.
But I just want to share the portfolio committee my experience.
But I want to share with the portfolio committee eh my experience.
How oh applya bakensau and drawla oba a marriage officer through the Home Affairs.
When you apply to be a marriage officer through Home Affairs.
Enwe di requirement that's a Home Affairs.
What are the requirements from Home Affairs?
Ki oru the church, eusongweyona, ebeli two hundred and fifty members.
Is that the church that you come from has to have over two hundred and fifty members.
But jolaka ngwana ya zuzung South African one.
But now, as a child who who was born in South Africa.
The number yabatu within the church eki le ngweyona.
The number of people in the church that I'm in.
Ain tibe lo ore, ha onale butata karo community, ki su iki lo tusa, yo solve ma tata adi.
Does not stop me from helping the community if there is a problem.
Emwe yazona ele nyana yena ya manyalo ana ama ngata ngata ribuan kawana.
One of those being eh these marriages that we are talking about.
Mo fumananga bana ba under age ibanya lo ki bonita teba bahul.
Where you find out that children who are underage get married eh by older men.
Mo fumanango professionalize wa lenyalo la bombo tsoana.
Where same-sex marriage seems to be professionalized.
Me ro narele baruti bereloke la rekena, releke otlaka taro.
And now as tradition eh as religious leaders, we're supposed to intervene and come with the solution.
Ki neki thaisa kapelo committee na.
I was just presenting in front of the committee.
Ore rele baruti di kirekenzera so mo so.
That as pastors from the churches that we come from.
Reba discourage who intervenea, matating auschaba sebalon.
We get discouraged to intervene eh with the problems that the community faces.
Kabakala some of the requirements itse karesanrebe qualified to tusa government eh or atre sa matata.
Because of the requirements that are needed for us to be qualified to help.
Murias tula wa di pisaa.
Eh chairperson.
Government eh ebeli constitutione yana ha kapelo hobabi.
The government has put eh the national constitution in front of the Bible.
Everything eh luke lan reyete, releba ai releba itapela ba di kireke.
Everything that we're supposed to do as citizens and the leaders of the churches.
Re luke laosha ba pele na constitutione ere inkatabazi.
We are supposed to first look as to what the constitution says about these matters.
South Africa, between eighty to eighty-five percent yaba ai bayona.
Between eighty-two and eighty-five percent of South African citizens.
Reba christa kaufa.
We are Christians.
Relate la ki the Islam religion.
And then Islam religion follows.
Empa di keto tsenkuanghangata ki muso leba tinka ru muso.
But most decisions that are taken by eh the government and those in government.
Di bonsa di hatella, sela yeu bu krista, oba tanti nto diye saleka yeona.
They seem eh to be stepping on how eh things are supposed to be, in terms of Christianity.
Ki ema mona ki re emuwa ba rutiba ba krista.
Now, I'm standing here as one of the Christian pastors.
Ki reham muso, howeza di keto kanakotsedi.
I'm saying that when the government makes decisions.
Re bisu releba rutir etlise pensiaga na mudimo le Biblei ere.
We should be called as pastors to come and say, what does God say and what the Bible says as well.
Example de enka yesang haribuaka tabayena ya marriage bill.
An example that I can make when it comes to this eh marriage bill issue.
Releba rutira na lebutata.
As pastors, we do have a problem.
Onale me kha lo ere kiri NPO eh fund one through social development.
There are organizations called NPOs that are funded by the social development.
Eh fuanchelate yao tusa ba tobaotunki di sex workers.
They are given money to help people that are called sex workers.
Ore ba ya itirilete khasano lema shoko aswaiza.
So that they can protect themselves against eh.
Mudimo le Biblei. Hadidumelanili teki so ya me.
God and the Bible do not agree with prostitution.
Obani taba yeu ki sebi ma shonga mudim.
Because that is a sin in the eyes of God.
Empa me kha lo yena ere rona muso refachalato, ri tusa ba tuba naba rikisa me.
But then these organizations are given money by the government to help these people that are selling their bodies.
Our ten commandments.
Mi eh di milayorona ele shume.
Ere osseke wa, osseke wa, osseke wa.
They say, you should not, you should not, you should not.
But eh eh ba karolo yeongwa di nto tsa, retamileka di kalemele, ba ti sito di kalemele, ba ni muso nsa chalato re di saputu.
But that's that's one of the things we're supposed to be reprimanding, but we are unable to do so because now the government gives out money for those people to be supported.
Me ki limuruti ya emensaba kinsin.
Now, as a pastor standing here.
Ki tla ta ore, hobushlo koho re nto tsena kaofala di beletau.
I say that it's important that these things should have control.
Empa hammuso odumelo ore, lenzula mudimo le mudimo, oete len totsana pi.
But then the government should allow God and his word to lead all of these things.
Ore re tarefu mane tarolo ya matata aruna ka ro misi repelangwe.
So that we can have solutions to the problems we have in our communities.
Ki rata okopa through eh we nan mudulas tulo.
Eh through you, chair.
Ore tabayena ya di requirements eh sa hobba a marriage officer.
I'm asking that this issue of requirements of being a marriage officer.
Ekeli ke oshibuwa ba neke na na ro hobushlo koha muso sebezala ba itapela sechava.
It should be looked into because I believe it's important when the government works with the leaders.
Me jolaka ba rutara to ba ka tokoa, la matata itenba tawa karolo mo re tusa.
And as pastors, we all want to sit aside, we want to be part of the solution.
Me rata ore, ha kitketé.
Eh when I, as I conclude.
Re leboa muñeta ona, oh, parliamentary filongo ona, re kro bua katabayena.
We are grateful for the opportunity that the government has given us to come and talk about this issue.
Empa has kaba la okala lela oketé.
May should it be the first and the last.
Ere filimunia tava ore reku kereleba tu muso waru.
It has given us the opportunity to feel like a people in our government.
Releba rutira na lipu ere.
As pastors, we have a word that says.
Ba itapeli barona ba parliamentary.
Our leaders in parliament.
Haritka ta hobachet.
After electing them.
Ba leba la moru na re 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 na lebonati, reba rapedi sa ore, bakene muso.
They forget when when they were with us, when we were praying for them, for them to be.
Sanse re na leba olelo na ba itapela baru.
We still have you, our leaders.
Me rekopa mudimo alete lepe di ketu nse tatalidi esaka magadi kopa nse.
We ask God to lead you in the decisions that you're going to make after this meeting.
Eta dumelanaka yeona, hori esainuweki the president of the country.
Eh according to the act that you are going to.
Etabe se orisi builense tataso hosofasa ba ai ba South Africa.
It should be something that we communicated that will eh make African people.
Ha holo holo majority ele ba krista karo na ya South Africa.
Especially because majority are Christians in South Africa.
Kialibou.
Thank you very much.
Eh. So, is there any other hand?
No.
That that want to say something that has not been said, something that has not been said. You can submit eh Moruti your 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 submission to our desk. Is there any other hand where you feel there is something that has not been said, that you want to say it? Or or you, not 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 reputation, if you've been eh eh on the queue here, you are fine, you've contributed. Any other hand? Nothing. Eh, advocacy ma malikate. So I think it's time for responses eh if you can come forward eh and assist in response.
Thank you, Narabul Govani.
I'm just gonna sign here next.
And good afternoon eh chair of the portfolio committee as well as the members of the portfolio committee.
Ki du medise amurulas tulo wa committee, hammoha le di tsoza committee ze haba.
Let me greet each and every one of you and thank you for the submissions that you have made.
Ki lebohe emonle. Na ki beken lebohe ka dizwaile tso seze olidi ente.
So some of the issues that I have picked up relates to pre-marital counseling of spouses before they enter into a marriage.
Se di ntsa di nto se okutlenle tswela katsona, di amana le chabollo kapata ta iso ezuwa, pele ba tuka kenali nyalo.
And I think that is connected to trading of marriage officers as well as designation of marriage officers.
Me kinahanarohapentre o eh amana litupelo, elo ke langweyetuwa, obasanka ba oba peswa matla, aw nyadiisa.
So after the president has signed this bill into law.
Kamra oru president eh atiki nasika mlausena ore, bi mla wo peta ezi.
The department will it will either conduct refreshers courses or eh train eh marriage officers on the new bill.
Le fapa le tlatlamaya ore, le yese di tupelo se di ntsencha, hori basanka bana ba peswa matla, aw nyadiisa barutet sela encha yao samangisa manyalo.
Because the responsibility to conduct pre-marital counseling lies with the marriage officers.
Obani bi karabelo ba ueza chabollo kapata ta iso yapele okanoali nyalo. Eh sepa mi sitwe, obasanka bana ba pesu matla, aw nyadiisa.
So we'll just ensure that we 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 uplift that and remind marriage officers that they pay that responsibility.
Yala re tswanela ohoposa basanka bana ore, ki bo na banale bi karabelo ba opetam sebezuwa.
Chair, I can confirm that I am the drafter, but I'm not a pastor.
Murulas tulo, nkaypa katabaya ore, kenna ya radilengi tabatsena, empa ha kimuruti.
But my responsibility is to ensure that the law that comes generally applies to each and every one in South Africa.
Empa bi karabelo ba kakone te fatza, hori molao, o sebele cha mutimunlimun ya pelankaha re wa Afrika Boru.
Irrespective of color.
Osanase urenakuamala ufin.
Irrespective of race.
Osanase urenakiwa bundu fin.
Irrespective of ethnicity.
Le hori na kiwa situ sefin.
So you would, I would just apologize that I'm writing a law for, that applies generally to each one of us.
Ki tay kupela charelo taba yeu ya ore, nakaralamo la o, osabeleza mutu, emonlimun.
But I can also confirm that I do read the Bible.
Empa nkainete fatza, altaba ya ore ki ya ibala Bible.
So the limit that has been set relating to eighteen years is not saying that at eighteen you must get married.
Ha obulele ore, ha usofishile di limonzela shumele mizero beedi, otlameha wonyalo.
It is simply indicating that if you choose to be married.
Empa isla kisa feela hori, haiba o chatha hori, onyaleka pa onyalo.
You must be eighteen years and above.
Otlameha oru bofishile di limonzela shumele mizero beedi, lehu fetamo.
So if we go back to the constitution.
Yala haiba ochutela mrao molao amte.
You would see under section twenty-eight of the constitution.
Otlafumanawa ore, katlasa karolo ya mashumea ama beedi ya mizero beedi ya molao amte.
It defines a child as any person under the age of eighteen.
Isalosa ngwana ele mutu ufika pa ufaya katlasu di limonzela shumele mizero beedi.
If you look at other eh pieces of legislation in South Africa.
Ah o sheba di karolo na se di ntsa molao wa Afrika Boru.
There are certain things that we cannot do with people who are under the age of eighteen.
Onale di nto se di ntsenata, se oru ke kenra diye za leba tuba di limonzeka tlasu tsele shumele mizero beedi.
It is not a must.
Hasitla me.
It is just simply creating an opportunity for that person to exercise his or her rights.
Empa elo utela mutu, no muñia isla feela wa hori, ai ke se se chato, ya hori na obatla ueza i.
I think also.
Ntsuwa abohadi.
So if you look at our processes from the Department of Home Affairs.
Ah o sheba tsa ma isoya rona utwalifapingla di tabatsala hay.
We are not involved at the time the marriage is concluded.
Rona ha umorke na ankana kuwele nyalo lepetela.
So what we then do is to register the marriage that has already been solemnized or officiated or entered into somewhere.
Rona ringodi sa feela lenyalo leba, nleseli le la tsofa la petela kaika i pele litiswa uru.
But we must be satisfied that indeed there is a marriage that is in existence.
Empa retzamiangwe re rechosofa za ore kasbele, onale lenyalo lese ntselalete.
So part of the requirements for us to register the marriage is that late.
Emwe yadi nto tso tswanela ngodiyeza, ho ngodi sa lenyalo, ki oru fumanela ngolo de.
Oh, you can only imagine if we were to simply say, do not bring that, what type of chaos will ensue.
Selikanaha nalilo nahe nelo, re odumela feela hori, hutluwa, ho sebopa ki ba inkapa, ingore na, ne tava perka nuika ay.
Let me just once I eh once again amplify eh our greatest thanks from the department for the submissions that you have provided. And thank you so much.
Eric, ki taski se se hapetaba ya teboya rona lefapingka ore, eberele radumelua hori, renke se abole rona mona. renke se abole rona mona.
Okay, thank you very much, Advocate Malikate.
Yaleboa Advocate Malikate.
So we've heard all your input.
Re utlule di chailo tso se talo.
We've considered all your input, we've listened to you. No input is not gonna be taken seriously in this room.
Re lema me tse kaufela halo na me di chailo talo na tso se hatladinka la shoo.
All input will be considered as submitted. And if there's some more that you want to write them, please write them again and submit them to our desk so that it gets captured correctly.
Tso se tse builu in'aritadin'ka le tse ken se empa ilorona lese di ntsi ban lishansani lenalitshwana leka di ngola na di kisha kuwano tafulemona di kakena lau tse di nleso.
So with us as a committee, after being heard all your input, the committee will go and have a meeting to deliberate on the content of the bill, taking into account the submissions, both formal, informal, and all submissions that you've submitted to us as a committee.
Yala rona rele committee re tlanka di tswailo tse na talo na tso se re dikopa ni re ilo di tshosha re shebe dikati ntsa tsa tsa tso.
As a portfolio committee of the Parliament, we'll then draft a report.
Rele committee atsebezu ya Parliamente re tlarala tla leo.
And then before we draft that report, in the Parliament, we'll then debate in the National Assembly. We'll draft the report, adopt it and debate it in the National Assembly.
Pele re rala tla leo yeu re tla kala peleka hori re ilongangisana kadi tabatsena kahara ntsu ya National Assembly.
And once that process of the National Assembly is drafting of reports, debating, pruning, cleaning up and doing all the things, once it's done, then subsequently the bill will be referred to the NCOP from National Assembly.
Hangar serketile kamisebeziyo yo se yahoo rala longangisana ka biliyena.
So that.
Tso se di kafiti tse tsa ntsungela te la ngelin lochotlalana ha la di province.
So that the NCOP as well embark on its legislative processes also in familiarizing ourselves with the bill that must be implemented.
Which is a RNCOP liona ifuma ne muñia tse wa hori ela telemitati ayona yahu zama isama la wona.
Thereafter, that process, once it's done in the NCOP as well, the bill will be sent to the President to assent it and it will become the Act of Parliament.
Hangar NCOP liona esee ketele ihotsofadi tse molao wona otlangkuwa ofiti tse tse homo Presidente homo Presidente aylo anana la ochaila monana elemonlaa okasbi.
So that's the whole process.
Otlangkuwa ofiti tse tse homo Presidente homo Presidente aylo anana la ochaila monana elemonlaa okasbi.
So that's the whole process.
Ta olatelakamramtsetetona orribilin lo na kaji.
So we advise as well the, in following that process of where the bill is going, where it is, so that you familiarize yourself with the content that whatever we put, you've submitted, you can at least see some element of it when that process still goes on.
Re kupalilo naschaba hori kamra uritabatsena kaufela le salamrau tabayena lennele shebe hori na eselemitatingi fe.
So I think I've clarified the way forward of what is gonna happen after this.
Ke na na hori keshlaki sitse kaoleka ne ngore na hutluwa mona wayapele hotla sebezuwa yuwa.
So then from the next step, I would like to appreciate wholeheartedly your, taking your time to come here and contribute towards strengthening your government in building these laws for you.
Ke bata olileboa lele onale leschaba kauri li le la ipamunia tsa lena kuwya hori letla kuwano le tloswaiela.
And also, we appreciate our staff, Home Affairs staff and support staff that is assisting us at table from Home Affairs as well.
Re anana la ribulere leboa bassebezi ba lefa palena la chale hay hammoha lebanaba committee baritisi ti mona.
The pastors, bishop, Ruti, the chiefs that have been here, also we appreciate taking their time to come.
Re boa le ba Ruti le ba bishopo le marena lebo se ba bilin kuwano orbatlo balero.
And all other stakeholders, NGO, community developments, we appreciate also to take your time to come and participate in the whole process.
Esitale bo se ba amehang di karolo tsa sechaba leme kha so yeming ba bilin le muñia tse wa orbatla kuwa.
So we've reached the end of this public hearing and I think the meeting now stands adjourned. Thank you very much.
Refilli pele tso ya pizza yena ya non ya ma ikutluasichaba. Yalebo.
PM?